This meeting is being held in person at City Hall and by video conference. The public may participate in this meeting by coming to City Hall or joining the Zoom webinar. The meeting is being broadcast live on the city's YouTube channel and Comcast Cable Channel 30 within city limits. There will be opportunities for the public to speak during this meeting. If you would like to address council, you may come to City Hall or participate via Zoom. If you are interested in speaking, please let staff know by filling out a yellow comment card over on the table there for those at City Hall, or emailing OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov for those on Zoom. When it is time to take public comments, staff will monitor the comment cards, email inbox, and Zoom participant list and chat. We will take comments in the order they are received and seen. Comments may also be emailed to OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov. We ask that all Zoom participants who intend to speak label their Zoom username to show their first and last names for the record. Spanish translation services are available upon request. The public is asked to request translation and other meeting accessibility services at least 48 hours before the meeting. For more information, contact the city recorder at 503-786-7502. Servicios de traducción en español están disponibles cuando se ha solicitado. Se pide al público que solicite servicios de traducción y otros servicios de accesibilidad por lo menos 48 horas antes de la reunión. Para obtener más información, llama al secretario de la ciudad 503-786-7502. Translation services are also available in other languages. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, long nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city of Milwaukee respectfully acknowledges that our community is located on the ancestral homeland of the Clackamas people. In 1855, the surviving members of the Clackamas signed the Willamette Valley Treaty, also known as the Kalapua et cetera Treaty, with the federal government in good faith. We offer our respect and gratitude to the indigenous people of this land. And then I'll move on to our announcements. The next First Friday event is this Friday, June 6th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. More information can be found on the First Friday website at www-firstfridymilwaukee.com, or follow them on Facebook and Instagram. The Linwood Neighborhood is holding a Neighborhood Wide Yard Sale this Saturday, June 7th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Maps to all of the houses that are participating will be available the day of at the St. Paul's United Methodist Church on Linwood Avenue. And I want to really give a shout out to the Linwood Neighborhood. I really love that they are doing this the week before we do our bulky trash collection. So let's see what we can find new homes for before we send it all to the landfill. So kudos to them in Linwood. The Milwaukee Museum will celebrate its 50th birthday on Saturday, June 7th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The celebration will include cake, new exhibits to explore, and information about upcoming projects. Admission is free and all are welcome to attend. The city's annual Bulky Waste Day event is coming up on June 14th and 21st for Milwaukee residents. Please check the city website to find out which day your home address is serviced and find out what can and cannot be collected. All are welcome to this year's community-led gathering to celebrate Juneteenth on Saturday, June 14th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The event takes place at Ball Michelle Park in the Llewellyn Neighborhood and includes music, vendors, food, face painting, kids' games, and more. Milwaukee is updating its transportation system plan, a 20-year guide for improving and adapting how we all get around. After a year of research and planning, a list of priority projects has been identified. Now is the time for the community to review the list of priorities and adjust or add to them to improve safety for pedestrians, bicycles, and vehicles. To do this, everyone is invited to attend at a community workshop on Wednesday, June 18th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at the Leeding Library. All attendees will be entered into a drawing for two $50 gift cards to local businesses. Snacks and beverages will be available while supplies last. Join a community-led festive gathering to celebrate LGBTQIA+ Pride Month on Saturday, June 21st, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Scott Park. The event will include community groups, crafts, fun activities, and live entertainment. For more information about each of these events and others, please visit the city's homepage at www.MilwaukeeOregon.gov, or call 503-786-7555. And every meeting, I read a haiku. And actually, today's haiku was submitted by Josh, who's running our cameras over here today. Dogwoods are in bloom, icon of our fair city, a splash of color. And I will take this opportunity to encourage other people to submit haiku to me. I'm always running short, so you can send them to me. My email address is there. And thank you, Josh. All right, so we have two proclamations tonight, and we'll start with Pride Month. And that's going to be introduced by Council President Will Anderson. And he's got two people he's going to introduce who can go ahead and make their way, or three, I guess, maybe, make their way up to the table. We did have an incident this week where someone defaced our Pride banner on the Pride artwork on the Kronberg Path Trail. And I really appreciate that the Milwaukee Public Works crew got out there right away to clean that up and were able to clean it up. I was a little worried it was maybe too damaged, but I will just say, at the farmer's market recently, someone came up to me and complained about the Pride at the city booth. I was volunteering at the city booth, and there was a poster for this Pride event and said, "The city shouldn't be doing that." And I said, "Yes, we can and we will." So I'm glad that you're all here to help us make that a reality. Thanks.
Thanks for that intro, Mayor. I'd like to start by thanking Trevor Adams and Nicole Osmus for coming today and for all the work you've been doing on Pride. I was a part of the Pride Planning Group last year, and we did not get investments from Travel Oregon, or the many vendors that you have, or all the exciting events that you've brought up. So it's going to be a really special year this year, and I'm so excited to see it. To the mayor's point, I just have a quick word. I was recently talking with my roommate, who's also gay. I live in a house of gay men. And he was saying, kind of challenging, the idea that we have a Pride flag in the front of the house. He was saying, "In a state like Oregon and a place like this, does it really make a difference to show? Is it a sign of courage to put up a flag like this?" And I think back to when I was growing up in Bend. It was a different place, but I never saw queer adults. I never saw people who were like me in relationships, like the ones that I aspired to. And it was really hard. And I think about the kids who grew up in Milwaukee who can go to an event like Pride every year, who can see Pride flags in their neighborhoods and queer couples on the streets. And it's really inspiring. It really brings a lot of joy to my heart. So a huge thank you to you, Nicole, and to you, Trevor, for putting on an event that shows so much visibility in our city right now.
Thank you so much, Will. And to that point, I recently had somebody come up to me on my own street and say that she just started a job next door to us and that she was pleased to see our Pride flag because it made her feel safe. So it's important. And hello, my name is Nicole Osmus, and I am an organizer for the city of Milwaukee's annual Pride event, which will be held this year on Saturday, June 21st, from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. at Scott Park, right behind the Leeding Library. The opportunity to plan this year's event came at a time when I was actually feeling pretty low and hopeless. I understand intellectually that historically we tend to gain ground or lose ground depending upon who's in power. But the last election made the part of me that's usually pretty optimistic feel very sad and withered. And the fear that I've seen in family and friends and community and even in the nation has been real enormous and appropriate given the dangers that we're facing. Being able to put my energy and attention into something tangible and important has been a really soothing balm for my mind and heart. And the gratitude that I feel for being able to interact with the people of Milwaukee while preparing this Pride event has been so overwhelming at times. Every time I walk into a small business, I am met with smiles, enthusiasm, a willingness to participate. And it just makes me really proud to live here and to raise my kids here. And I just want to say thank you so much, Milwaukee, for allowing us to do this. And the celebration belongs to all of us, and we all belong here.
Hey, everybody, councilors. My name is Trevor Adams. And yeah, we really appreciate that you all have let the community be a part of this event. And I want to give a very big shout out to Nicole, who I've gone to meet through co-organizing this with her. And she has been amazing. To Will's point about the amount of vendors and different donations we've got, 100% kudos to Nicole for doing them all. So really, thank you so much for all the great work that you're doing for the city of Milwaukee. We really, really appreciate it, and everyone will get to see it very, very soon. Thank you, Nicole.
And yes, we'd love to have you read the proclamation if you'd like to do that.
Whereas the fight for equality continues for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, questioning, intersex, asexual, and other historically marginalized members of our community. And responsibility falls on all of us to form a more inclusive and equitable society. And whereas June 28th, 2025, marks the 56th anniversary of the Stonewall uprising, six days of demonstrations sparked by the targeting and arrest of police of gay, lesbian, and transgender bar patrons in violation of their civil rights, an event widely recognized as the beginning of the modern gay rights movement. And whereas history has failed to properly recognize the role of the leaders of the Stonewall uprising, including Marsha P. Johnson and Sylvia Rivera, transgender women of color who helped spark this movement. And whereas in 2000, President Bill Clinton declared June to be Gay and Lesbian Pride Month to commemorate the Stonewall uprising, and in 2009, President Barack Obama expanded the commemoration by declaring June to be Lesbian and Gay Pride Month in recognition of the very right to exist.
Now, therefore, I, Lisa Beatty, Mayor of the city of Milwaukee, a municipal corporation in the county of Clackamas in the state of Oregon, do hereby proclaim June 2025 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in Milwaukee in support of our LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. I call the 2,427th meeting of the Milwaukee City Council to order. This meeting is being held in person at City Hall and by video conference. The public may participate in this meeting by coming to City Hall or joining the Zoom webinar. The meeting is being broadcast live on the city's YouTube channel and Comcast Cable Channel 30 within city limits. There will be opportunities for the public to speak during this meeting. If you would like to address council, you may come to City Hall or participate via Zoom. If you are interested in speaking, please let staff know by filling out a yellow comment card over on the table there for those at City Hall, or emailing OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov for those on Zoom. When it is time to take public comments, staff will monitor the comment cards, email inbox, and Zoom participant list and chat. We will take comments in the order they are received and seen. Comments may also be emailed to OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov. We ask that all Zoom participants who intend to speak label their Zoom username to show their first and last names for the record. Spanish translation services are available upon request. The public is asked to request translation and other meeting accessibility services at least 48 hours before the meeting. For more information, contact the city recorder at 503-786-7502. Servicios de traducción en español están disponibles cuando se ha solicitado. Se pide al público que solicite servicios de traducción y otros servicios de accesibilidad por lo menos 48 horas antes de la reunión. Para obtener más información, llama al secretario de la ciudad 503-786-7502. Translation services are also available in other languages. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, long nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city of Milwaukee respectfully acknowledges that our community is located on the ancestral homeland of the Clackamas people. In 1855, the surviving members of the Clackamas signed the Willamette Valley Treaty, also known as the Kalapua et cetera Treaty, with the federal government in good faith. We offer our respect and gratitude to the indigenous people of this land. And then I'll move on to our announcements. The next First Friday event is this Friday, June 6th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. More information can be found on the First Friday website at www-firstfridymilwaukee.com, or follow them on Facebook and Instagram. The Linwood Neighborhood is holding a Neighborhood Wide Yard Sale this Saturday, June 7th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Maps to all of the houses that are participating will be available the day of at the St. Paul's United Methodist Church on Linwood Avenue. And I want to really give a shout out to the Linwood Neighborhood. I really love that they are doing this the week before we do our bulky trash collection. So let's see what we can find new homes for before we send it all to the landfill. So kudos to them in Linwood. The Milwaukee Museum will celebrate its 50th birthday on Saturday, June 7th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The celebration will include cake, new exhibits to explore, and information about upcoming projects. Admission is free and all are welcome to attend. The city's annual Bulky Waste Day event is coming up on June 14th and 21st for Milwaukee residents. Please check the city website to find out which day your home address is serviced and find out what can and cannot be collected. All are welcome to this year's community-led gathering to celebrate Juneteenth on Saturday, June 14th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The event takes place at Ball Michelle Park in the Llewellyn Neighborhood and includes music, vendors, food, face painting, kids' games, and more. Milwaukee is updating its transportation system plan, a 20-year guide for improving and adapting how we all get around. After a year of research and planning, a list of priority projects has been identified. Now is the time for the community to review the list of priorities and adjust or add to them to improve safety for pedestrians, bicycles, and vehicles. To do this, everyone is invited to attend at a community workshop on Wednesday, June 18th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at the Leeding Library. All attendees will be entered into a drawing for two $50 gift cards to local businesses. Snacks and beverages will be available while supplies last. Join a community-led festive gathering to celebrate LGBTQIA+ Pride Month on Saturday, June 21st, from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. at Scott Park. The event will include community groups, crafts, fun activities, and live entertainment. For more information about each of these events and others, please visit the city's homepage at www.MilwaukeeOregon.gov, or call 503-786-7555. And every meeting, I read a haiku. And actually, today's haiku was submitted by Josh, who's running our cameras over here today. Dogwoods are in bloom, icon of our fair city, a splash of color. And I will take this opportunity to encourage other people to submit haiku to me. I'm always running short, so you can send them to me. My email address is there. And thank you, Josh. All right, so we have two proclamations tonight, and we'll start with Pride Month. And that's going to be introduced by Council President Will Anderson. And he's got two people he's going to introduce who can go ahead and make their way, or three, I guess, maybe, make their way up to the table. We did have an incident this week where someone defaced our Pride banner on the Pride artwork on the Kronberg Path Trail. And I really appreciate that the Milwaukee Public Works crew got out there right away to clean that up and were able to clean it up. I was a little worried it was maybe too damaged, but I will just say, at the farmer's market recently, someone came up to me and complained about the Pride at the city booth. I was working, volunteering at the city booth, and there was a poster for this Pride event and said, "The city shouldn't be doing that." And I said, "Yes, we can and we will." So I'm glad that you're all here to help us make that a reality. Thanks.
Thanks for that intro, Mayor. I'd like to start by thanking Trevor Adams and Nicole Osmus for coming today and for all the work you've been doing on Pride. I was a part of the Pride Planning Group last year, and we did not get investments from Travel Oregon or the many vendors that you have or all the exciting events that you've brought up. So it's going to be a really special year this year, and I'm so excited to see it. To the mayor's point, I just have a quick word. I was recently talking with my roommate, who's also gay. I live in a house of gay men. And he was saying, kind of challenging, the idea that we have a Pride flag in the front of the house. He was saying, "In a state like Oregon and a place like this, does it really make a difference to show? Is it a sign of courage to put up a flag like this?" And I think back to when I was growing up in Bend. It was a different place, but I never saw queer adults. I never saw people who were like me in relationships, like the ones that I aspired to. And it was really hard. And I think about the kids who grew up in Milwaukee who can go to an event like Pride every year, who can see Pride flags in their neighborhoods and queer couples on the streets. And it's really inspiring. It really brings a lot of joy to my heart. So a huge thank you to you, Nicole, and to you, Trevor, for putting on an event that shows so much visibility in our city right now.
Thank you so much, Will. And to that point, I recently had somebody come up to me on my own street and say that she just started a job next door to us and that she was pleased to see our Pride flag because it made her feel safe. So it's important. And hello, my name is Nicole Osmus, and I am an organizer for the city of Milwaukee's annual Pride event, which will be held this year on Saturday, June 21st, from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. at Scott Park, right behind the Leeding Library. The opportunity to plan this year's event came at a time when I was actually feeling pretty low and hopeless. I understand intellectually that historically we tend to gain ground or lose ground depending upon who's in power. But the last election made the part of me that's usually pretty optimistic feel very sad and withered. And the fear that I've seen in family and friends and community and even in the nation has been real enormous and appropriate given the dangers that we're facing. Being able to put my energy and attention into something tangible and important has been a really soothing balm for my mind and heart. And the gratitude that I feel for being able to interact with the people of Milwaukee while preparing this Pride event has been so overwhelming at times. Every time I walk into a small business, I am met with smiles, enthusiasm, a willingness to participate. And it just makes me really proud to live here and to raise my kids here. And I just want to say thank you so much, Milwaukee, for allowing us to do this. And the celebration belongs to all of us, and we all belong here.
Hey, everybody, councilors. My name is Trevor Adams. And yeah, we really appreciate that you all have let the community be a part of this event. And I want to give a very big shout out to Nicole, who I've gone to meet through co-organizing this with her. And she has been amazing. To Will's point about the amount of vendors and different donations we've got, 100% kudos to Nicole for doing them all. So really, thank you so much for all the great work that you're doing for the city of Milwaukee. We really, really appreciate it, and everyone will get to see it very, very soon. Thank you, Nicole.
And yes, we'd love to have you read the proclamation if you'd like to do that.
Whereas the fight for equality continues for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, questioning, intersex, asexual, and other historically marginalized members of our community. And responsibility falls on all of us to form a more inclusive and equitable society. And whereas June 28th, 2025, marks the 56th anniversary of the Stonewall uprising, six days of demonstrations sparked by the targeting and arrest of police of gay, lesbian, and transgender bar patrons in violation of their civil rights, an event widely recognized as the beginning of the modern gay rights movement. And whereas history has failed to properly recognize the role of the leaders of the Stonewall uprising, including Marsha P. Johnson and Sylvia Rivera, transgender women of color who helped spark this movement. And whereas in 2000, President Bill Clinton declared June to be Gay and Lesbian Pride Month to commemorate the Stonewall uprising. And in 2009, President Barack Obama expanded the commemoration by declaring June to be Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Pride Month. And whereas, despite the progress of recent years, LGBTQIA+ Americans continue to face discrimination and new attacks by state governments and other political figures on the legitimacy of their human rights, including their very right to exist.
Now, therefore, I, Lisa Beatty, Mayor of the city of Milwaukee, a municipal corporation in the county of Clackamas in the state of Oregon, do hereby proclaim June 2025 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in Milwaukee in support of our LGBTQIA+ Pride Month.
We really, really appreciate it and everyone will get to see it very, very soon. Thank you, Nicole.
And yes, we'd love to have you read the proclamation if you'd like to do that.
Whereas the fight for equality continues for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, questioning, intersex, asexual and other historically marginalized, marginalized members of our community. And responsibility falls on all of us to form a more inclusive and equitable society. And whereas June 28th, 2025 marks the 56th anniversary of the Stonewall uprising, six days of demonstrations sparked by the targeting and arrest of police of gay, lesbian and transgender bar patrons in violation of their civil rights, an event widely recognized as the beginning of the modern gay rights movement. And whereas history has failed to properly recognize the role of the leaders of the Stonewall uprising, including Marsha P. Johnson and Sylvia Rivera, transgender, transgender women of color who helped spark this movement. And whereas in 2000, President Bill Clinton declared June to be Gay and Lesbian Pride Month to commemorate the Stonewall uprising. And in 2009, President Barack Obama expanded the commemoration by declaring June to be Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual and Transgender Pride Month. And whereas despite the progress of recent years, LGBTQIA+ Americans continue to face discrimination and new attacks by state governments and other political figures on the legitimacy of their human rights, including their very right to exist.
Now, therefore, I, Lisa Beatty, Mayor of the City of Milwaukee, a municipal corporation in the county of Clackamas in the state of Oregon, do hereby proclaim June 2025 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in Milwaukee in support of our LGBTQIA+ family, friends and neighbors and proclaim that love is love, you are valued and welcome and your city stands with you. Thank you. Thanks for coming. We all look forward to the event in a couple of weeks. Yeah, thank you. All right. And the other event coming up this month is Juneteenth. And so I would invite Equity Steering Committee member Anisa Turbowski, who's bringing her son with her, and Equity and Inclusion Coordinator Gabriella, no, Gabriella's saying no. Okay, just, just Anisa. And I'm sorry, I forgot his name. Thank you guys for coming. I will just say it's not that many years that Juneteenth has been recognized as a holiday. You know, I think Oregon recognized it a little bit before the federal government recognized it, but it's really become an integral part of Milwaukee now, of our Junes. And so it's great to see this as, I think, the fourth year we've done a Juneteenth event. And so thank you for your work on it and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Really appreciate the opportunity to come before you all and, and speak a little bit. So my name's Anisa Turbowski and I wrote my thoughts because I'm much better written than verbally. But I stand here not only as a proud Black community member, but as someone deeply grateful to call Milwaukee home for myself and for my family. Juneteenth is a celebration of freedom, of resilience and of hope. It honors the strength of Black Americans. It's a day that reminds us that freedom, justice and equality aren't always given, they're demanded, fought for and nurtured generation after generation. And while that history is painful and it's, it is also powerful, it is rooted in community and looking out for each other. That's why I feel especially proud to stand here or sit here in Milwaukee, because this city shows up for community, not just in words, but in action. Whether it's showing up for local events, supporting Black-owned businesses, uplifting youth voices or standing in solidarity when it really counts, this city has shown me what it means to care about one another. It's not perfect, no places, but Milwaukee makes the effort. This is a city where neighbors connect with one, with one another, where people show up for the hard conversations and where we keep working together to make our corner of the world just a little more just, a little more joyful and a little more united. As a Black resident, I feel seen here. I feel safe. I feel rooted here and for me and for my family, that means everything. Juneteenth isn't just about the past, it's about the future we are all building together. It's about continuing the work of liberation, not just for Black folks, but for all people. And that work is made possible when communities like ours come together, stay connected and keep showing up for one another. So thank you to the City of Milwaukee for recognizing this day. Thank you for valuing community and thank you for giving me and so many others a place where we feel proud to live, grow and thrive.
Thank you. And would you like to read the proclamation or any of you?
Sure. I can, yeah, I can read that. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln first issued the Emancipation Proclamation effective January 1st, 1863, declaring enslaved people in the Confederate states to be legally free. However, that proclamation could not be enforced in lands under Confederate control. On April 9th, 1865, Confederate forces surrendered, effectively ending the Civil War. On June 19th, 1865, Union soldiers arrived in Galveston, Texas, the westernmost state of the Confederacy, bringing news of the president's order freeing enslaved people two and a half years after it first decreed. This day marking the end of chattel slavery in the United States has since come to be known as Juneteenth. And whereas Oregon's constitutional ban on both slavery as well as residence by free African-Americans lay the foundation for generations of economic hardship, exclusion and discrimination against Oregon's Black African-American community. And whereas through our system of oppression such as sharecropping, Jim Crow, exclusionary and destructive housing and transportation policies, denial and disruption of voting access and mass incarceration, the plunder of Black bodies and Black wealth continued past slavery and persists to this day, affecting the physical and mental health, safety, education of and opportunities available to Black African-Americans. And whereas despite these obstacles, Black African-Americans in Oregon have been and continue to be dynamic and vital community members and leaders within our state. And whereas Juneteenth has been celebrated in Oregon since 1945, when Claire Peoples moved to Portland from Oklahoma to work at the Kaiser shipyards and introduced it to her coworkers. And whereas the City of Milwaukee, the State of Oregon and the federal government now recognize Juneteenth as a legal holiday.
Now, therefore, I, Lisa Beatty, the Mayor of the City of Milwaukee, a municipal corporation in the county of Clackamas in the state of Oregon, do hereby recognize and proclaim Juneteenth, June 19th, as an annual celebration of the past, present and future of Black African-American liberation and those who continue the work to realize that liberation. So thank you. And although Juneteenth officially is June 19th, we're having our, our celebration on June 14th.
Yes, and I wanted to thank, we have a group of ESC members, the Equity Steering Committees, that have been working tirelessly for the last two months to make this event what it is. And so we hope everybody can join us and we're really excited to celebrate with the community.
Great. Thank you so much for coming today. Okay. The next thing on our agenda was supposed to be introduced by our Assistant City Manager, Joseph Brilio, but he's under the weather. So the city manager is picking up the mantle and will introduce the next agenda item.
Thank you, Mayor. I am not happy that Joseph is sick, but I am happy that I get to do this because what a fun night. I mean, I feel like tonight is just this big celebration of what makes Milwaukee special. Those proclamations were incredibly moving and we're going to keep that celebration going by celebrating two of our newest residents on Main Street who have really brought a celebration to our downtown that has not stopped since the last week of April. It, it's truly incredible to see what our friends over at Keeper Coffee and Freem Brewing have done. I'm, I'm very pleased to introduce Rudy Kellner and Britt Huff, who are going to come up and talk a little bit about their amazing businesses. They kind of need no introduction, given, you know, how much I think we all are enamored with them. But it's gonna, it's just really lovely to be able to invite them here tonight to, to share a little bit more about their story. I met Britt and Rudy first at the Meet Milwaukee event out at Milwaukee Floral. And I feel like they've been like my old friends ever since. And that's just such an embodiment of how I think Britt and Rudy show up and how they already feel just like treasured old members of our community. They are, they fit what the fabric of Milwaukee is, which is inclusive and joyful and creating spaces where people want to gather. And I, I think I speak for Joseph, myself and all the staff. We could not be happier with the space you have created down there at Historic City Hall. It's a building we loved and cherished and it was a big deal for us to hand it over to others to love and cherish and just couldn't be happier. So Britt and Rudy, thank you so much for being here and tell us a little bit about you and your, your teams.
Thank you for that. And you also seem like an old treasure, Britt, all, all of you, actually. It's really cool to see you not just behind the counter. I remember Robert came when I was setting up patio furniture before we opened and I had my son running around, he had like food on his face and my hair was half done. And I feel like we've seen each other kind of like in the morning, you know, hustle bustle and through the day. And it feels very special to be a part of your lives and for you to be a part of mine and my family's life. So thank you very much for the warm welcome and the community for sure. I'm Brittany Huff. I am a resident neighbor in the Linwood neighborhood. I am a part of the yard sale this weekend. I'm very excited. I'm very excited. My daughter's going to have a coffee stand. Yeah, I opened Keeper in 2019 in a dress shop in a small little mobile operation. I have been working in the food service industry for a very long time. I mean, honestly, kind of born into it. My family owned restaurants and delis in New York and I kind of grew up in the backrooms there. And when I moved to Oregon, I had briefly taken a job in marketing and was like, I gotta get back into food service, but I had a new baby and we bought a new home and I didn't think it was the right time. And kind of against all odds, I, I did it and I opened that tiny little space. And I didn't imagine that just five years later, I would have these two really beautiful community-rooted locations. But I think that that era of the pandemic and opening my Holegate location, which is a bigger brick and mortar, really kind of pivoted and turned that page for me and for my really small team at the time. I was the only owner and I didn't have any investors or funding and so it was a scary time, but it was really special to interact with the community in that way. And I had always hoped to provide that hospitality and care for everyone. And I'm, I'm always just full of energy and I think that that season needed that. And so it was fun to do that then and I always second guessed if it could happen in a similar way with that type of energy and life. And then when we moved to Milwaukee, my daughter goes to school right down the street. I'd catch me and the parents just standing on the sidewalk talking and I was like, gosh, we really need a place to hang out, you know? Like we would go different places in Milwaukee, but I felt like it was, I wanted to bring that here. I wanted to bring it to my own home. And so when Travis, who is, you know, the development team for City Hall pursued me three years ago in June 2022, we met each other. I really pushed him off because I thought nothing's going to be quite like this. It's not going to be as, as sweet and tender as this. And he kept pushing and pushing and finally agreed to it. And that was June 2022. And I was so curious who our neighbors would be. And when I found out it was Freem, I just felt this ping and joy of, you know, like inspiration that we really could do the thing here. And so it's special to be in a community where it feels like a lot of teamwork for us, where I feel like we show up and our team shows up and we make you pastries and coffee. But for us, it genuinely is about community service for us and hospitality. And so I hope you always feel that. It, it is so honest coming from us. And yeah, I'm, I'm still the only owner and I have a beautiful team behind me and we're so honored to be here. And yeah, thank you for giving me the chance to make you all coffee. It's very special for me, so I appreciate it very much.
We'll do questions all together after. I'm Rudy Kellner. I'm one of the owners and founders of Freem Family Brewers. Thanks for having us. It means a lot. I'll give you a little bit of background of who we are and what we do and then love to take questions. But we, Freem is a also independently owned private company, I guess. We only have a couple owners. We all work all the time, every day. You know, we're, we're very actively involved, the, the active members are. We've been in business since 2012. We opened in Hood River in 2012. Really didn't, didn't know much, I didn't know much about the, the beer business, but thankfully Josh Freem did. And we've been growing this little company of ours for the last 13 years. We've now become the 40th largest brewery in, in the U.S. in the country out of 10,000, which is pretty cool. Third largest in the state in terms of, in state producers. So we, but we're still kind of a small, humble team in, in Hood River from a production perspective. And we've waited 13 years to open our second spot. And that's, that's like the, the kind of the funny story I tell folks in Milwaukee is we, we, you know, we've looked at a lot of locations over the years and we've been kind of dreaming about, you know, having another spot to call our own, but nothing felt right until, I vividly remember walking into Historic City Hall with Joe, you know, two and a half, three years ago. And there's something, there's something special about that building and about the connection of the community to that building, which is one of the reasons we didn't really brand it. You know, if you walk around the Freem space, there's, there's almost like no Freem, you know, logos. There's, it's about the, about the city, about the community, you know, it's about the, the history of the building. And we really wanted to celebrate that because we felt this sort of pull and attraction that the community had to this building and, and kind of wanted to, you know, wanted to redo it, but, but really not touch it. Just clean up a little bit and give it a little, a little bit of character and let the building kind of do the talking. So that's, that's the, that's, you know, how we think and how we, how we, how we roll. We employ about 54 folks at Freem in Milwaukee. Many of them are local community members, folks that used to, you know, drive 20 minutes to go to work at some other brewery somewhere else in, you know, in the Portland area. And now they're biking to work here or walking to work. We have a lot of walkers and a lot of bikers to, to Freem Milwaukee. So I feel like a lot, a lot of these folks have brought their own regulars. I, I sit behind the, you know, I sit in front of the bar and I just, I'm stunned at how many conversations I overhear about, you know, Rick and Bob have known each other for years and, you know, Rick has been pouring beer for Bob, you know, at some other place for the last five years and now they're, you know, in Milwaukee. So there's been, there's a lot of like local, really great local vibes that we've, you know, we've discovered. And that was like the feeling that we had when we were looking at the project was like, oh, this feels, it feels like a community that's ready for something like this. And I tell you, you guys have come out in force. So I'm very thankful for the support. And from, you know, city council and the city management perspective, very, very professional job in terms of supporting us, you know, professionally and giving us access to resources. Scott has been really wonderful in, in helping us navigate the city and all of the, you know, new, new people, new things, new services. We were working with Dan on Milwaukee Fest, so you guys have done a really, really good job of, of really like, you know, technical support and making it easy for companies like ours to do, you know, business here. We haven't opened a new restaurant in 13 years and you have made it easy to do that. So thank you.
Well, thank you. I don't think I have to ask either of you how business is going because I see the lines. So I'm glad, I'm glad and I, there's been tons of excitement around both of your businesses. I mean, we hear it from all quarters. I did, since you mentioned Milwaukee Fest, I thought I'd ask you to say a little bit about what your beer garden plans are for Milwaukee Fest.
Yeah, I think, I think maybe pretty simple. We're gonna, not to take away from how extravagant and great it's going to be, but we're going to take the, you know, take the north, north lawn, you know, north of, on the north side of the building, you know, essentially adjacent to Keeper Coffee. We'll, we'll have that all fenced in and we'll have a beer garden, we'll have some lawn games, there'll be some food. We'll be working with Keeper on food and it'll just be, it'll be easy. Dan asked us to provide some entertainment from folks that are walking north to south from parking towards Milwaukee Fest and, and give them, you know, a little, you know, a little love. So that's what we're going to do.
Awesome. That's exciting to hear. I don't know if other councilors have questions, but I'm sure some of them may have comments, so I'll open it up to them.
Well, I'll, I'll start with Brittany. What's been the biggest surprise?
I mean, as a business owner, you go to sleep at night and really hope someone shows up the next day to buy your coffee and pastries. But I guess that wouldn't be the surprise. It's just fun, you know, that we opened and we were just absolutely slammed. What's the biggest surprise? I think how seamlessly, and like you said, it feels like old friends. I was worried we'd have to do a lot of convincing of who we were in the community, that we did care, that we would provide good hospitality, that we are customer service forward and we have a good product. And it, and I don't think that, I mean, I think that people do know who we are, but we're much smaller than Freem. And so I think that is the biggest surprise, that when people walk in, even if it's their first time, they almost feel like the place is theirs or they own it. And I love that. I love that sense of like belonging and I hope that we create that environment for people. And so I'm glad that it translates and that's like kind of the dynamic that's there and it, it didn't take any time at all. So I think that, yeah, that would definitely be the biggest surprise. It feels old, but it's, it's new, you know?
Thank you. Rudy, I'll give you the same opportunity. What's, what's been the surprise?
Similar, I think similar answer. You know, part A is we were, we were significantly busier than what, what we had anticipated. We knew we'd be busy. We, we were expecting to be very busy. We were, you know, 30, 30% more than very busy. So, and we, you know, we, we had, we hired significant staffing for, you know, for the opening and we, we
and we, we realized quickly we needed more. So that's a, that's a good surprise, but it's, you know, um, challenging from a customer service perspective, right? Um, because similar to Brett's comments about Keeper, um, it's about service in this industry now. Um, there are a lot of places to go get fed and have beer. Service is what matters. So we were very surprised about how, you know, how busy we were and we had to do some catch up in terms of overall staffing and service. And I'll also say, you know, from a, from a great surprise perspective, it's how many, how many families I see walk in and also like friend groups, literally walk like from home or, or bike. Um, I'm not used to that. In Hood River, it's very much, um, very tourist forward, our client, you know, our client base. Um, here it's, it's families, um, a lot of families and a lot of, you know, um, two couples, you know, and four kids or three couples and two kids. And I feel like it's truly folks that have needed a place to go, right? You feel that. It's like, ah, thank, like, like, thank God, right? We, we finally have this, this place to go that we've been, you know, like thinking about, dreaming about. It feels, you know, kind of complete. So that's been, it's not a surprise, but it, but you have to kind of, you know, kind of see it to believe it. So that's been wonderful.
Thank you. Great to have both of you here.
Honestly, a huge thank you to both of you. Like it is, you, you're making a decision where you choose to set up a business and where you create those local jobs, where you bring those local dollars and you create that sense of community. Um, and I just want to impart the gratitude that we all feel up here on the dais, our city staff feel, our community members feel, we are so grateful that you're a part of this community. So I might ask, what can we do to help you out? No matter how big or small, some challenge you've had with our permitting department, some existential problem you have, uh, what could we be doing to show our gratitude?
I really love, um, like that, that this feels already like a connection. And I hope over the years you will all provide feedback to us. I think that's really my only ask. Like, I feel like when people kind of get in their groove and like, I've seen this with many restaurants over the years. I've managed other restaurants that are not my own. And it's like, you kind of hit that two-week mark and then you settle in and it feels good and it's a good stride. And then, you know, a year later, you start getting the reviews that are like, oh, well, it wasn't as good as the first time or it wasn't as good as six months ago. And that has never, you know, that's a boast of mine. It has not ever been a problem at Keeper. We are so on top of it. But even in just like anyways, like if you're like, hey, the umbrellas are, you know, they keep landing on the sidewalk or hey, people are, you know, the traffic is happening this way and we want to encourage pedestrians this way. I would love any of your feedback, um, and just open dialogue in general. Cause I feel like, um, it's, it's really cool to be in that old building. And I do feel like it's this like badge of honor that we have this special old building in the community. So we do want to do it justice and honor the space and honor the community in that way. And then also, of course, if you ever feel like your service wasn't the way you anticipated or it doesn't line up with like Keeper's values or, you know, what you're expecting, we of course want to know that. So, um, yeah, we always want to have an open ear and I would love any feedback from all of you. And I really appreciate all of the kind feedback that you're giving us. So yeah, um, open to it all, good or bad.
Uh, yeah, thanks for asking. Um, I think, you know, technically on, you know, the, the city services side, um, wonderful experience. Like, like I said earlier, um, just, you know, you guys have the, the scale to have technical capability and capacity, but, but it feels small, you know? We can just call one another and talk to each other and folks are really responsive. So very, very good, you know, in terms of overall service delivery, um, both from a bandwidth perspective and just like tech, technical expertise. Um, you know, something to keep an eye on and, and the, the police department's been extremely, um, helpful. And the folks I've worked there, uh, with there have been very much on top of it. But, you know, we've had a couple of small, um, uh, security issues on the south, you know, west corner of, um, of Maine. Um, we're, you know, busy, there's a lot of people, there's a lot of traffic. So it's something to keep an eye on. The responsiveness has been outstanding, you know, and I met the community resource officer, um, early. And both are the, the captains in the, um, on the police department have been very, very, you know, Tony and, um, someone else, Greg, have been very, very responsive and helpful. So that staff feels safe. Cause, you know, more importantly, customers feel, you know, safe in case there's like, you know, some, anything going on. So something to keep an eye on. We're making our own improvements. We're going to be installing some, um, kind of, of fencing that's like half decorative, decorative and, and half functional on, um, on the south and, uh, west sides of, of our location, just to create a little separation for, and comfort for customers. But overall, it's been wonderful.
You're talking about the bus mall side?
The, yes, the south side on the, on the bus mall. Yeah, yeah. And I think all of the incidents we've had have stemmed from, you know, that directly. But I don't, I don't want to, you know, um, you know, give a negative impression about that. Um, it's, it's something we expected, something we're dealing with, something we train our folks, um, to, to deal with. And you all have been very, um, very responsive and, and assistance when we've needed it. So that's the only kind of, you know, maybe funky thing. Outside of that, that and having a 90-year-old building to, to, and we've learned, you know, we, we broke a lot of building systems in the first, uh, in the first three weeks. I know, I know. That's what, that's what I hear. It is. I feel like that, that elevator probably didn't get that much use, uh, when, uh, when you all were using the building.
Okay, well, that's really helpful. We'll see what we can do and I get a big thank you.
I, I don't have any questions. I actually just want to say thank you for, for being here, uh, being in Milwaukee. You know, I, I know having a business, starting a business, that's a huge risk. That's a huge leap of faith. No matter whether you started, you know, in a smaller boutique shop or if you started in Hood River, it doesn't matter. Uh, it's a pretty big leap and, and you put a lot of trust in this community to help support and sustain that business and vice versa. The community puts a lot of trust in your business to provide the services you do. So, uh, it's a mutual partnership, but I just want to say I appreciate, um, the risk you took and, and, you know, being here and, and providing not only just jobs, but a quality service and product that people can enjoy, families can enjoy. So thank you so much. And I appreciate our planning department and our staff for, for making it what sounds like a, a pretty, pretty good process. So thank you.
Thank you to you both. I'll echo the thanks and gratitude. I think it can be a little daunting to think about moving into such an old building and especially an old building that has so much meaning for the community. And so the sense of stewardship that you have taken on, um, to transform it into, um, even more of a community gathering place than it has been, um, is just, it's really special. And, um, I just really appreciate the intentionality that both of your businesses have taken with that process. Um, so the, the question really that I have is, you know, um, I hear a lot about, um, about your presence from all different types of communities, but I'm really curious about young people. Um, you know, there's, there's been kind of a, a vacuum of things to do downtown for youth. And I'm wondering how you are connecting with youth and if there are ways that we can support that connection and that partnership?
I love that question because I have an almost eight-year-old and my son is 18 months. So it's often on my mind, like, how can we, especially because Keeper can feel like fast fine dining in a way? Like, like we have cloth napkins and it can feel maybe more dressed up in some ways, which I hope that whoever brings their children also enjoys the cloth napkins and the ceramics. I want them to feel special in that way. So I thought a lot about this. Um, and the logs outside, um, are to encourage play, especially for children, but for anyone. And then I have a special idea that I want to take, um, up with Brent over at the library and I'll give you just a little sneak into it. But, um, there's so many childhood books that I grew up reading that are food-focused, which of course are my favorite, um, like Blueberries for Sal and then Bread and Jam for Francis. And so I want to create, especially because we have so much seating upstairs, on some weekday time, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, in the morning when it's much quieter. That's usually when we get the like pre-nap families come in with the strollers. Um, and, and they're all separate and I, I want them to all be together because they would really enjoy each other. And I remember being alone with my very young baby and thinking like, I want to talk to this other person, but I don't really have the energy. And so maybe if there was an opportunity to create a hospitable environment for that, because sometimes like a library reading doesn't feel like that, where you're like, there's a lot of germs here and I'm ready to go, you know? Like, there's so many runny noses right now, you know what I mean? So it's like, if you're in that environment where it feels like your space as like a parent, but then your kids are also welcome. And so I want to use, um, like books monthly to have a reading time, whether we invite someone in or I am happy to read many books to children. And we have, um, pastries that are, you know, are around whatever book it is. So blueberry pastries for blueberries for Sal and fun PB&Js or something for the kiddos. And I think it would be such a nice way because sometimes I would avoid going to children's events with my kids because I was like, I really don't want to endure that moment without a coffee in my hand. You know what I mean? And so if I can get these parents the treats that they deserve and these children the treats they deserve, we can have a fun reading time together. And that's for much younger children. So I, I always think through things, especially for my daughter. She's, you know, older than my youngest son, but, um, it is on my mind. And I think that's a really fun question and I would love any ideas if you have them too. Sorry, that was a very long explanation.
I don't have a, I don't have, um, you know, we, we, we sell alcohol as part of our, our thing. So we, you know, we didn't, um, we were much more, um, let's say kid-forward, um, in, in Hood River when things were like smaller and simpler, you know, this is 13 years ago. But my answer to that question is a little different. For me, it's, it's, um, training and, um, giving opportunities for young people to learn how to, learn how to, learn how to work. Uh, we've been really successful in Hood River, working with a local high school, employing, um, you know, sophomores, juniors in high school that have never had a job, um, don't really know what it means to have a job, you know? Um, and to have like their first employer, you know, professional employer experience. And we've been really successful in training these kids, getting them up and running, teaching them communication skills and, and, you know, kind of self-management skills to be able to show up to work every morning and, you know, put some hours in. So I think that's, that's what I, you know, I, I view your, you know, the lens I view your question through is, um, we have a lot of, you know, a lot of work that needs to be done at Frem, Milwaukee. And, um, not all of it needs to be done by like very experienced folks. A lot of, a lot of it can be done by, um, you know, a lot of our support work should be done by less experienced folks. And those, you know, my, my view is, um, can be young, um, because those folks learn, you know, learn quickly and they do work really hard. So that's, that's how I, you know, think about that is, is, um, working with the local high school and, and trying to get a funnel, um, of, of some, of, um, students to come through and, and get their first professional experience in a, in a supportive, you know, safe, um, professional environment.
Well, I love both of those answers and really appreciate that they reflect the values that you have in your businesses and, and the connection that that has for our city. So look forward to working with both of you. Thank you.
All right. Well, I don't have anything more to add. Um, I think that, that the thanks come from all of us and from really the community as a whole. I mean, I, I hear a lot of people very excited, uh, about coming. And, uh, I know I for one have bring every friend I can through and, um, and I've learned the trick of coming at 4:30.
And I just, I need, I need to clear the record on something. There's a rumor going around City Hall that I am sponsored by Keeper, given how often I am there. Similar rumor that Michael Osborne, our finance director, may be sponsored by Frem. He is not. We just really, really love your product.
All right. Well, thank you guys for joining us and for joining our community. Thanks. After all the feel-good parts of this meeting, we do have business to do. So, community comments. This is the part of the agenda during which council will hear community comments on city business that is not on the agenda. Before we begin, is there any follow-up from the May 20th comments, Ms. Sager?
Thank you, Mayor. Just really brief, um, our comments last time focused on, um, the proposal in Fernburg Park. I don't have an update there, but we did have another comment about the, um, middle housing development on Southeast Harrison and Home. I just want to say, say for all of council, let you know that the mayor and I will be going out Thursday afternoon to meet with the neighbors there, um, and kind of, uh, walk the site. And, uh, breaking news, I think we have solidified a date for the town hall, because a, a representative from the state, um, HAPO, I can never remember what it stands for. HAPO, Housing Accelerate.
Housing, uh, something production.
Yes.
Accountability, I don't know.
Well, some, some A will be there on July 28th. It's a Monday, so I'm making eyes at all of you because none of you told me you would be out of town on July 28th. Speak now or forever hold your peace. So July 28th, it'll be, um, we'll come up with the exact times, but I assume kind of a 5:30 to 7:30, um, evening meeting. So, uh, that's my only update.
And also on that, I think next Tuesday, we have our, um, our study session is about affordable housing. And then at the end of that, we'll have some time, I think, to talk about, um, the town hall and sort of what kind of format and what kind of, how we want it to run. So, um, we will have that conversation next week. Okay. I am not seeing any comments, Mr. Stauffer.
I have no comment cards, Mayor Beatty. And there is, uh, we do have a Zoom audience, but the hand is not raised.
Okay. Then I am going to forego the rest of that script, uh, and move on to the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda includes minutes of the city council April 15th, 2025 work session and April 15th, 2025 regular session. A resolution appointing the following people to boards and committees. Joshua Freeman, Jeanette Owen, Whitney Lyon, Mari Co. Fair and Zachary Magic K to the arts committee. Mac Golos, Mary Rao and Angela Owens to the audit committee. Carrie Ann Schumacher to the budget and community utility advisory committees. Cameron Ruin, A Center Sunrise, Nikki Storm, Melanie Bates and Elizabeth Start to the equity steering committee. Emily Lowry, Mary Ruth Storer, Sean Smith, Heather Buchanan, Christina Thomas and Gray Buo to the library board. Colleen Rockwell, Deborah Wasserman, Eric Matasek, Virginia, um, I think Eric is actually not being appointed. Virginia Pie, Heather Baskerville and Sasha Grenier to the parks and recreation board. Alexis Barton and Olivia Padilla to the tree board. Um, we got a notice from Adam that Eric had withdrawn. So I don't know how you want to handle that, if you want to correct that next time, because we will be having an, an additional appointment next time.
Let me pull up the resolution, I'll just, if it's in there.
Okay. While you're doing that, a resolution of the city council of the city of Milwaukee, Oregon, authorizing an engineering services contract with OCD Automation, Inc. to provide on-call supervisory control and data acquisition support services.
Uh, so it looks like that just got put in the script, but the resolution does not have Eric's name in it.
Oh, perfect. Okay. Perfect. Okay. Does any council member wish to remove a consent agenda item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as, I guess revised, but to reflect the resolution on the record.
It's removed and seconded to approve the consent agenda as revised, to reflect the resolution in the record. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. None heard, passes unanimously. Public hearings. Oh, I didn't realize this was actually a public hearing. Okay. The public hearing on the proposed budget adjustment is called to order. The purpose of this hearing is to hear the staff report, take public comments, deliberate and consider approving the proposed budget adjustment. Does any council member wish to announce actual or potential conflicts of interest? Seeing none, I will turn it over to finance director, Michael Osborne.
Good evening. Um, I'm here tonight to just go over a quarterly budget adjustment that I am proposing. Uh, this is a small item one. Uh, there's three things involved. One is, uh, for $800,000 in ARPA funds. We received these funds in fiscal year 21, 22. Uh, we capture, we recognized the revenue for them in that year. What we're doing here is taking them from the beginning fund. What we're doing here is taking them from the beginning fund balance and moving them to the public works requirement budget line so that it will be an offset and net zero. So we're just basically making sure that on the budget at the end of the year, that the budget will meet the expense as the expense is coming through in this year, fiscal year twenty five. And then number two is we are closing out the City Hall Fund at the end of fiscal year twenty twenty four. There is a hundred and forty six thousand, eight hundred and forty seven dollars in that fund. We are complete with the City Hall, moving into new City Hall. So we're taking those funds and moving them to the general fund into the city manager budget, which will be used for future art for the building. Some of that's already been done. So this hundred forty six thousand is as of the beginning of this fiscal year. So we've already incurred some expenses that have pared that down. And then the twenty five hundred is just an administration timing issue from the previous year. We're just moving that between the council line item and library.
Okay.
Any questions on the budget adjustment?
Anybody have questions?
I have a procedural question for my recorder. There's something that wasn't in the report and isn't in the resolution you'll vote on tonight that I wanted to daylight. Should I do that now or after they close the public comment part of the hearing?
My perspective now is as good a time as any, just making it clear that this is not part of the voting voted on.
You're not voting on this tonight. It's something I just want to daylight because it would be brought in a budget adjustment next quarter. It's kind of a late-breaking thing that happened after our budget committee conversation on this adjustment. You previously authorized a budget adjustment to increase the FTE of the Building Department because as we've talked about, the workload for that department is extreme and it's a very healthy fund. If anything, it's a little too healthy and we have to outsource a lot of our inspection work to contractors. We have successfully done a recruitment for that inspector that you authorized. And it took a while. We had to post it, then we weren't getting any bites. We had to get, do an MOU with our union to increase the compensation for it. We finally got some bites. We've got a grip, two fantastic candidates. So my building official has asked for the approval to over hire, so we get two inspectors. Having reviewed the health of the fund with the finance director, I, I'm comfortable authorizing that over hire, which is in my, my city manager authorization. But I didn't want to not mention it to you now and then hire this person and then put it on a budget adjustment later. So I wanted to daylight it for you today. If you have concerns, happy to answer questions or hear those concerns now, but just wanted to let you know that that would be something that we would be putting in the next quarterly budget adjustment, an additional FTE for the Building Department.
So can I clarify that eight hundred thousand would not be helping fund this new position? Or?
They're two totally separate.
Totally separate things. So this, this new position would be funded entirely by the building fund, which has the fund balance to cover this additional inspector.
Can we, it is kind of vague on what the expense will be that the eight hundred thousand covers.
That's for parks-related expenses.
That was ARPA dollars that we got to support the, the three park projects. And so really this is an administrative cleanup. We have already, you know, signed invoices, planned to do this. We just have to show that it moved from beginning fund balance to appropriations, just a paper cleanup.
That's all, thank you.
So that's all about the parks. That's not about the year, the other ARPA money we talked about at the end of the year about the, the emergency management.
Yeah, that was previous and that was done in the previous budget adjustment. This is a new one just for cleanup as we're closing out the parks.
I see, okay.
It's just making sure that the revenue and the expense match in the financials for fiscal year twenty five.
Okay, and then the twenty five hundred dollars coming out of the council budget? What's that coming out of?
That was for some purchases at the end of last fiscal year for some education equipment. And it was, it was a timing issue at the end of last year. And we had put it in the library budget, but just to make sure to even it out for this year, we are moving it from council back to the library to make a whole.
Okay.
These were books purchased for our youth board and committee members and.
Ah, okay.
We talked about this briefly during the council budget update.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Have we received any correspondence on this topic?
I'm not aware of any correspondence, no.
Does anyone wish to comment on the proposed budget adjustment? No hand raised in the Zoom audience? Okay, then I won't read that script. There's no testimony for staff to respond to. Last call for questions. All right, if there are no more questions, I will entertain a motion to close the public comment part of the hearing.
Mayor, I move to close the public comment part of the proposed budget amendment or adjustment hearing.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public comment part of the proposed budget adjustment hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. The public part, the public comment part of the hearing is closed. Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
That would be me. I move to approve the resolution authorizing budget supplemental for twenty twenty five, twenty six biennium.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution authorizing the budget supplemental for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six biennium. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. It passes unanimously. Thank you, Michael. Did you guys want to talk about that state letter or you're just going to send that out in email?
Thanks, we were just, we were just chatting about that. We, we figured we'll just send it out. It's a little tangential to this, but we received a letter from the Secretary of State Office about our audit. Nothing surprising, but it was addressed to all of council, so we want to make sure it's sent to all of council, Budget Committee and Audit Committee. Basically just authorizing that they reviewed our ACF, noted things in it, and they, they aren't asking for any edits to the report. So that will be in your inboxes shortly.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, so we're on to council reports and we'll start with legislative. So Mr. Stauffer and I have also been talking to the council president about drawing on his expertise about shenanigans in Salem and.
It writes itself shenanigans in Salem.
It does.
I do have a slide show. It's much, much reduced from previous slides and I do have a feeling no one's going to want to hear me talk. We're all going to turn our eyes to the council president. So very quickly, we are marching towards signee die on June twenty ninth. We are past all the deadlines, so what is alive is alive. The good news is some of the bills we've been tracking, perhaps the good news is the following bills listed here have been signed into law, so I won't bother to read them. I'm assuming we all are probably well aware of these things.
Oh, wait. Thirty-five oh five? We talked about that in the work session. And so it'd be great if it's done.
There is this one conservative representative, Dwayne Yonker, down in Grants Pass, and he voted no. It was the only no vote.
But it has passed.
It has passed.
Awesome, good. Thank you, good news. That's exciting news.
Good news there. We've got a slew of bills that are marching through third, first, third, second readings, and these are those bills here.
One piece of good news today, the Power Act passed the Senate, so that one's off to the governor. The rest, I don't know about transmission, but the rest are still waiting.
Okay.
So they march along. And then the ones that are still at some various version of the process, election filings is having a hearing tomorrow. Public records, this is a bill that the Public Records Advisory Council, which I sit on, worked on pretty actively two years ago. And then a working group of various members of the legislature and interested parties have been hammering through a new version of the bill to have. It really addresses public records fees and it talks about commercial requesters and it gets kind of into things that I'm not super worried about as a city. And it kind of just underscores the public records laws that we already follow here. So that one's, that one's was sort of dormant for a long time. It was a placeholder and just recently it's had some action. And then some of the other bills, I didn't see as of this morning, had anything scheduled, but thirty-seven, forty-six condo liability had a work session a couple of weeks ago. Four seventy-three, threatening a public official had a work session. And these had something recently and they've been in both chambers is what I was looking for. And then two thirty-eight regulation of drones, which is a late add, added to our tracker in the last couple of weeks. I think Mayor Beatty and Chief Verdic had an exchange or there's something connection there about the regulation of drones. So, and I still don't see a number for the transportation package, but.
I think that will be the number at some point. There's not a bill though.
Not a bill yet. I keep hearing it's like losing the football when they're going to drop it. Heard this Friday, but.
Okay, well, on the drones, I will just say yes, there was a, a call from, I don't know, I saw it from a couple of different quarters that police departments were, you know, being asked to support this bill. And I worked with our police department and submitted a letter in support of it, I guess ten days ago or something like that. But I had not heard, I guess it's not through yet. It's a, it's a bill that would allow expanded use of drones, not to require, but, but still within safeguards, within guardrails in terms of not just, you know, running them over people's backyards willy-nilly, but having to have some, you know, reasonable suspicion or whatever the legal standard is. Okay, anything on that? You have any updates on condo liability or any of the rest of those?
So condo, I had to go, the two Senate bills below condo are both in House rules, so they're not subject to deadlines there. They just have to get out before signee die. Condo liability is in a unique position. It passed out of the Senate Committee, it's already passed on the House floor, it's being held on the Senate President's desk. So he is the unique power in the legislature to hold any legislation he wants for an indefinite period of time. So he's holding it on his desk. I think that presumes that he's having some discussions about how this bill fits into other asks. But if this is a bill that we want to pass, which I think we've expressed, it would be good to reach out to Senator Taylor with a letter about that bill. Because I think that there was widespread support in the House for this concept and would hate for it to stall in the Senate.
Well, it was actually drafted by a senator, right?
Yep. It also represents part of Milwaukee, so I'd like to reach out again.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's condo liability. I can jump into transportation package or we can wait till later.
This is pretty much everything I have, so.
Go ahead.
Okay. The transportation package, I have, the mayor asked for kind of an update there. I tried to type out a few areas where I think we could focus on, maybe that we might have issues as a city or things that we might want to talk to Rep. Gamba and Senator Taylor a little bit about. The first of these is a concern with fifty, thirty, twenty. So in the original framework, fifty, thirty, twenty is maintained. That's the provision that the state gets fifty percent of highway funds, county is thirty, city's twenty. There is a proposal with all these new revenue streams to have some of them taken off the top of fifty, thirty, twenty and given to ODOT or specific set aside projects. Two hundred and fifty million would be taken off of fifty, thirty, twenty to go towards funding projects that were promised in twenty seventeen, which is the Abernathy Bridge, Rose Corridor, there, I think there are some token projects in Salem in Eugene. I think that an argument that cities and counties could make is this is within the purview of state funds. There already is a provision for local matches in the twenty seventeen framework and this two hundred and fifty off the top of newly collected revenue coming from a sales tax on cars would detract from the fundamental agreement in fifty, thirty, twenty. Two hundred and fifty million is a significant chunk. So I think that's one area of concern there that LOC has not, I have not heard as many complaints from them about. So if that's an MMC question or an LOC question, it's an issue we could raise. The other thing is for programs like Great Streets, Safe Routes to School, programs with a local nexus, ODOT is saying these are programs that serve local governments, so we should take them off the top as well. And I think the challenge that I kind of have here, I think about this with our county sometimes too, the focus of ODOT is on our transportation system as a whole, which includes some funding of projects that happen at the local level. That fifty is not only going towards our highway systems. I think it also has to cover projects at the local level like these projects. It doesn't have to be the majority of their funds, but I like that they still are investing in other roads in the same way that the county is not only serving unincorporated areas, they also serve the cities that are within the county. And I think that those programs should fall under the normal purview of ODOT's budget. I think it's less of a compelling than the two fifty, but these are two instances where chunks of money are being cut off the top.
And is there a dollar figure for that chunk of money?
No dollar figure, but I know Safe Routes to School, our budget was forty or forty-one million dollars this last biennium. And if they're proposing an increase to meet the demand that we've seen, I could imagine it's a two hundred dollar, two hundred million dollar allocation. Because they're also talking, I should mention, about jurisdictional transfers, which proposed the legislature about a hundred and twenty million dollars in asks. So a chunk of money.
Are they considering, all those different types of revenue streams to pay for transportation? Are they, they're considering all of them? Like, or are they saying like, this is what we can pick from?
They're considering all of them, so.
Putting all of them in?
Yeah, which is also a thing that we could mention. If there are some revenue streams, one that is being hotly debated right now is a road use charge. So a challenge is gas tax revenues. We're supposed to emulate, if you drive a lot, you should pay more for our roads. And gas tax, when it was first conceived, was a pretty good implementation of that. But as cars have become more efficient and there are more electric vehicles, there are, that initial premise is less true. And so a road use charge would first be applied to EVs, but eventually phased into new vehicles that are hybrid or fuel efficient to capture. The, the premise of, we, we've talked a lot about this, what is equality in our transportation system? And we've premised that equality we should see is the people who use the system the most should pay the most for it. And a road use charge is trying to say, okay, if you're using the system regardless of what type of vehicle you use, you should be paying for the system and your use. So road use is one where like, some people say it should just apply to EVs, not to hybrid vehicles. Some people say it shouldn't apply at all. I think other revenue streams are a little more niche. I think the challenge is if you pick just one revenue stream, you have to increase it so much that it's really difficult versus a lot of different revenue streams. It's small increases that aren't felt all at the same time or in different ways, but still is a lot of increases. So.
I'm surprised that the, that the road use is so controversial because I felt like, you know, it was a good solution for the people who say EVs don't pay any gas tax, which they don't. So, I mean, and I, I mean, I guess I see us eventually needing to move to a road use fee for everybody and probably get out of the gas tax business. So I'm sorry to hear that that's, yeah.
I think the fork in the road that we find ourselves at is do we, do a road use charge just for electric vehicles or do we apply it to fuel-efficient vehicles that are in theory paying less in gas tax? Then frankly, a lot of our declining gas tax revenues have come from fuel efficiency in our vehicles. There's not as much widespread adoption of EVs to really show that steep decline that we're having. So that is the challenge there. I think it's also, if you go to a random person and say, would you want to have the government keep track of where you're going in your car and track up the mileage? People don't, it's a tax you feel a lot, whereas the gas tax, you don't necessarily feel like you're getting taxed. You just say, gas is so expensive, my God. And so I think that's part of the road with a road use charge as well.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in that camp, you know? I just, the taxes we pay already pay for those things. Like, the whole idea of taxes was to pay for infrastructure, so now we're going to pay again for the same thing that we already get charged for to pay for. That, that's, you know, infrastructure is what the state's supposed to provide. It's not like a luxury. If you don't have, if you don't have infrastructure, you can't get supplies, you can't get anything. So it's not just about people using the road, people have to use the road.
Yeah.
And it's just, it just kind of sucks because there's some jobs out there that are going to be, you know, most vulnerable jobs, those lower-end paying jobs that require a lot of driving, that you're going to hurt those people the most.
Yeah.
And those people already pay what they're supposed to pay. I just, I don't like it.
Yeah.
Well, I've, I've heard some concern from rural, that it's, I've heard some concern from rural mayors or, you know. That it's, I've heard some concern from rural mayors or, you know, mayors in. In far flung parts of the state that it's, it's a higher tax on. It's an unfair. Burden on people who live in the sort of more sparsely populated areas of the state.
Yeah, and I think it's hard. I mean, we have. We built a lot of our roads in a time when the federal government was largely subsidizing that construction. It made it really easy to do. But we didn't adequately prepare for the maintenance costs of these roads. And so our like. Our urban fabric is not designed in a way that our tax base right now can subsidize. The infrastructure that we have. And so there's the rub. And I mean, we have challenges like, I work down in Salem, which is fifty five miles away from where I live. That's not necessarily, I don't think in a perfect world, that's the type of system that we create. And I think we as Americans have become accustomed to that and we're like. It's not an Oregon unique problem is what I'll say. A lot of other states are encountering these problems with their. Like transportation systems. So it's something that we kind of rub up against.
Surprise the issue.
This is the next thing that I think we could gripe about. The transit across the state is largely paid for. With a payroll tax, a one percent payroll tax, a point one percent payroll tax on all Oregonians. Transit advocates have been asking to increase that from a one percent, point one percent to a point. Five percent, a point four percent increase. Try, I met says that if they do not get an increase, they're gonna have to cut fifty one of their seventy eight bus lines. So massive service reductions. In part, this is because. The way that TriMet rides, their ridership has declined in recent years post pandemic. It's slowly recovering. But the big number that stuck out in my mind, in twenty fourteen, the average government subsidy per transit ride on TriMet was about two dollars and eighty cents. In twenty twenty four, it is eight dollars and forty cents. So that increase, and I might be fudging the numbers a little bit, but there is a lot more. It is requiring a lot more of our systems to pay for the transit ridership that we're seeing in part because people aren't using it less and it creates this doom loop.
I have a quick question. So, I'm sorry, you said per transit ride? It's an eight dollar subsidy?
Yep.
What's the cost of a transit ride then?
Let's imagine I pay two eighty when I hop on, so. Eight forty plus two eighty, ten dollars.
Okay, so you're saying that the subsidy brings it down to, okay, all right, sorry.
Yeah, yeah. And I might be fudging the numbers a little bit, but I think the.
I was not.
The parable that we could arrive at from this is it's gotten a lot more expensive. And I guess my like consternation here is. Multiplying this tax by five times is a lot. We're also being told by the state that we have to allow for the. Development of more middle housing, that we have to eliminate parking minimums around transit. Things that will make housing more affordable, but also come with real burdens that our residents are feeling. And then for the state to no longer subsidize transit, for people to be able to get around, seems like there is like no good solution. I think one of the, being able to go to sites on Harrison Street, I'm at least able to say, well, you've got a bus line on King and. These people who come in have at least the hope that they could use that. But if they're cutting fifty one lines and that's one of the lines that's cut, it's just become so much more difficult. To, for cities to adjust to the requirements that the state is putting on us.
So this payroll tax is what they call the stiff?
Yep.
And so the fourfold increase in the stiff would not. Would not. Expand service? I mean, I thought, I think, I think in some of the tables I've been at, when people, when they hear from TriMet. They think that there's gonna be additional funding for small, you know, local transit, last mile transit. That kind of stuff like we've talked about for our industrial areas and stuff.
So, and this is the problem with our transportation package overall. None of the, this is not a projects package. It's a maintain the baseline that we have package. And so all of these increases don't give us anything new. They just prevent us from having to cut deeply.
Are you serious?
Pretty much across the board. And so this is, I think one way we could think about this. Is this is how much we've been underfunding our transit. We've relied on basically ARPA funds to keep our ODOT afloat. But as gas tax peters out and other things peter out, we're coming to a big reckoning as a state with what happens. And I think the challenge that maybe our state reps see is voters by and large don't see transportation as a problem. And they don't see the need to maintain current service levels as a problem. And so to what degree do you let the system fail for people to see it's a problem? So that you have a mandate from the voters to fix something versus you proactively do what's right. Because you know you have the obligation to govern and do right by the state. It's like a hard moral question that I don't think there's a simple answer to, but I think. By and large, there's a lot of like consternation up in Salem because there's taxes on people who are struggling as is. And we've heard from voters time and time again that the cost of living matters. And we also know that our transportation system is gonna crumble if we don't do something. So what do we do? That's where we can weigh in as a city. Enters in to part three, cap and trade or cap and invest is somewhere taking a call in. Republicans have been negotiating with Democrats in small tables. Not represented their entire caucus, but a few members who are willing to consider a transportation package. These members brought forward, it was Republican led, an idea about cap and trade. So this is the bill that Karen is still famous for this. She gets a lot of kudos. She stood up for six hours on the house floor. And took questions on this bill and I think made a big statewide name for herself. It was one of my first times being like, wow, this representative is really cool. She carried this bill that was explosive and derailed two legislative sessions. And now Republicans are the ones who won it. And in part, it's ironic because at the time, we said to Republicans. If you don't take this cap and trade deal, the governor is gonna do an executive order that will be way worse for you. Than cap and trade would. It's gonna be way less flexible than we could have been in legislation. And they said, we'll see you never. And lo and behold, they would like the cap and trade deal now. I think that the environmental community is a little upset because they weren't included in this. In part because it was a Republican brought forward concept. The business community would like it and I think that's. Caused a bit of skepticism as well. I think overall, this proposal has the potential to bring about two billion dollars in revenue to the state for one time uses like wildfire and infrastructure. Which I think would be really helpful and could help to counsel Cozrabi's point. Reduce the investments that we have to make or allow us to have additive investments to make a transportation package better. There's skepticism on if we can get this done and what it would look like. And there's skepticism from environmental groups about if this is the direction that we want to go. So I think the three things that I would say, if our council wants to make an impact where our voice could matter. One is, do we want to raise a stink about fifty thirty twenty and say? We want those, this program to be not just maintained, but earnestly maintained, no money off the top. Two, do we want to say something about transit investments, especially in light of the middle housing requirements that the state has forced on us? And three, do we want to say something about cap and trade and the potential to have business bear the brunt of these. These costs for our transportation system as opposed to people knowing that. There are some other challenges associated with that as well. And that's a difficult conversation. So that's my.
So to think about those questions, what do you think the timeline is? I keep, like you said, it's Lucy in the football and they keep moving it. But I mean, there will be a hearing at some point. Will it happen before our next meeting on June seventeenth?
I think Friday, there will be more announced about the transportation package. I think what, if I were to recommend a course of action. It would be for all of us to kind of sit with these questions, think about what we would want to do, research it a little bit more if you'd like. And maybe we could in our council reports section next Tuesday, talk about this a little more at length. And reach out to Rep Gamba and Senator Taylor about what we would like to see in the transportation package. I think the reality is the. Leadership is probably counting votes on these bills or like thinking about how they get to yes. And so. In an ideal world, we communicate that after this meeting. But if we need more time to think about it, we could go to next week, but we risk. Our comments not having as big of an impact. So choose your own adventure, man.
I don't know if others have thoughts. I mean, I feel like I'm a little bit. Like I, I need to see a package. I need to see some stuff on paper, but I, I mean, what you've just outlined is consistent with what I've heard in other. Settings in terms of the big, the big pieces. Thoughts, anyone?
You covered a lot of ground.
Sorry.
And so, I mean, you know, is this, is this one letter? Is it three letters? You know, I, I'm. It was just a lot.
Well, I think the, I mean, I would separate them. I mean, I think the fifty thirty twenty is easy. I mean, that's an easy thing to write a letter around. I, I think it's in some earlier letters. And we don't really have to actually see a package for that. I guess the. And maybe we don't for the transit piece either. For the cap and invest, that is just all come about so quickly that. And it's, there's, there's so much there about, you know, there's so many questions about that that I feel like. That one is, is really hard to take a position on personally. I mean, I did, I will add though that, I mean, this is typical. End of session sort of horse trading that goes on and actually councillor Cozrabi and I were on a chamber of commerce. Zoom today and they called out some other bill and I can't remember.
The state, the state tax.
Oh, a state tax that's kind of like, the Republicans want it. I don't.
They increased the threshold from like one to thirteen million. And they're saying that they're using that as a bargaining chip, saying Republicans, we know Republicans want this. So we'll give you this, but you gotta come to the table for the other thing.
Yeah.
So they're just kind of dangling it.
So there's, yeah. So I mean, that's just another example of sort of horse trading that's going on and, and it will move fast and it will. You know, be hard to keep up with, but.
There's a funny anecdote. There's, Republicans care a lot about these wildfire risk maps that the state passed. And there's a bill to repeal those wildfire risk maps. And Republicans can do something called a bill poll where they try and pull a bill from committee. House Democrats are holding that bill in rules for more consideration. And House Republicans have committed to doing a bill poll every single day until that bill comes to the floor. So horse trading indeed.
Of all, all of their votes?
Just the fire bill.
Oh, Jesus.
Yeah, and they missed it today, so I don't know how much of a commitment it was.
Anyway, I think your initial. Suggestion that we all just kind of sit with this and circle back next Tuesday kind of sounds. Right to me. I'm not seeing anybody. And, and, yeah. I guess I will say if they take. I guess there's a question of how far cities want to go and I'm kind of curious. I will be on a MMC call on Thursday. How far cities want to go on the fifty thirty twenty has to apply to every dollar? Or whether we're like, okay, if it doesn't apply to this new. Pot, we're okay. As long as it applies to the bulk, you know, so I don't, yeah, I don't know. I don't know. How, how far, how do we, how far do we go dying on our sword on that?
Question about percentages. So the proposed off the top. Would reduce the available funds in its entirety, right? Not so that the percentages would still remain proportional as they have been, well.
Yeah.
A little slightly disproportionate.
I think so. Here's the number that I have. There is. One point nine billion dollars that would go additionally into the highway. State highway fund each biennium. This would reduce that to one point seven. So it's not a one third chunk, but it's not a like one percent chunk. I think the other, the heartburn that I have with that in the twenty seventeen package. It was presumed that the state would contribute fifty percent to these mega projects and local governments would. And frankly, it's these mega projects that have bankrupted ODOT and are spiraling up in cost and like. The, I think, adding a lot of weight onto our system. And then to say, not only are we going to continue down the road with these large projects, but we're gonna. Take even more money from cities outside of that fifty fifty split that we negotiated in twenty seventeen. I think is a little tricky. But to Mayor's point, there's other hills to die on and this isn't a huge chunk of money relative to the larger conversation.
So does the one point nine you said is going to the state highway fund? So that's just that, that's not the total because the, the stuff you're talking about on the great streets and safer routes to school and stuff is a separate? That's not the state highway fund?
That would be, so it would be state highway fund, I'm pretty sure. Because great, I think great or safer routes to school is confined to right of way as well. But I'm less sure about that. I'm pretty sure the way it's written, at least in this framework that I'm reading. That would be the case, but I would say let's put a big asterix on that until we see actual numbers in the package. This would be, just to put in actual numbers, eight hundred and fifty million to the state, five hundred and ten million to counties and three hundred and forty million. Million to cities per biennium.
After the clawback.
After the clawback, yeah.
I don't know, there's just a part of me that kind of wishes that. The overall percentage to the state might be reduced a bit for this. You know, I mean, it is nice to put more money into the fund and it's great that the percentage, you know, that kind of like floats all boats. But. I don't know. I feel like it's a way to get around the conversation of tolling and some of these projects that remain, you know. Uncompleted, incomplete. That was one of the sticking points for the C four letter that jurisdictions reviewed and we discussed. When we pushed that forward. I just worry about the amount of funding that. That cities need to be able to complete. Projects and that even though this is an infusion of, of costs. There could be potentially more on the table for cities. So I just, I wonder if LOC is, where is LOC on this?
I, I didn't do LOC's call last Friday. Yeah, so I, I don't, I don't have an informed, yeah.
Okay.
If nobody else has read the LOC bulletin from last Friday.
No, I haven't.
Yeah, I don't know.
And I would say anecdotally, I haven't heard LOC complaining as much about this. I've heard LOC talking a lot about fifty thirty twenty, but not this specifically. So if this is something that, like candidly, I think MMC, if this is something that we want to raise, would be a good platform for us to raise this. But yeah, I think it's up to us. I also, to put this in maybe like Milwaukee numbers to help us all understand. That three hundred and forty million to cities per biennium, if we take Milwaukee's population relative to the population of Oregon. Which is point zero zero five percent of the state of Oregon and multiply that by the three hundred and forty million. I want to make sure that I've done my math right, but that would be about. One point seven million dollars extra to the city of Milwaukee each biennium. Now imagine I probably did the numbers slightly wrong, but. This is like a significant amount of funds to our local government, which I think is the. At the end of the day, why this package matters is this increases our ability to pave our street and meet the needs that we see. Even outside of the transit question, like we can have more sidewalks and neighborhoods that are seeing more housing. That would be huge. We can see other investments.
So what's, what's to ensure that ODOT doesn't F this up too, F this money up too? Like they did with all these other big projects and then we're right back here from twenty seventeen to now.
Yep.
Time frame, but what's?
I think there are like, let me put ODOT fuckups in two buckets. There is.
There we go.
Thank you. I, as soon as I make eye contact with Adam, it's like all filters.
But the record short, that was eight seventeen.
Eight seventeen. Yeah, I didn't have to go that late.
Josh will take care of it.
ODOT, I know Jennifer is like, closer ears, closer ears. All of ODOT's little mistakes. I would say, one category is just like general ODOT mismanagement. There, there are like structural problems in the agency that I think the legislature is trying to take serious. How they fix, the OTC is being kind of looked at, how they relate to ODOT. That is something that like, you're not alone in sharing that. And that's not a Republican or Democratic concern. Everyone's mad at ODOT. The other part is like, these large projects are just incredibly hard to deliver. And every year that we wait, the price tag goes up hundreds of millions of dollars. And so it is just, like Rose Quarter is an impossible project to do in some ways. And it's,
Right, right.
But it's so fundamental to the way that Republicans have used that back in the past. And it's also like, a project that the state views as important, that we're just in this hard crossroads. And so how do we fix it? Really hard problems to fix, candidly.
I will say, I heard somebody say that the, um, who was not a Republican, say that, um, the Rose Quarter is super important because if we don't fix the Rose Quarter and we build a new interstate bridge, we still don't get people through any faster than we do now.
And I think this is also where, so Metro had a policy that they would not improve any new lane increases without some type of congestion pricing. And they set that aside when they took a vote to approve the ODOT fund, or approve the federal funds for the Rose Quarter. Freight, freight's view of Rose Quarter is it's a huge bottleneck and they want some way to relieve that. Congestion pricing, not as a tool to raise revenue, but as a tool to alleviate congestion, is incredibly effective. But the problem is, ODOT has proposed congestion pricing as a means to generate revenue to pay for the state on the backs of Blackman County residents. And that is so poison the waters for congestion pricing. You can set really low congestion prices. It has huge impacts on behavior. And it probably would have had more of an impact on Rose Quarter than actually building Rose Quarter. But at this point, all those conversations are shelved because tolling has become such a negative word in our neck of the woods.
ODOT sounds like a disaster. Jesus, so they're just gonna.
If you're looking for jobs, Adam.
I'm just saying, they're, they're gonna keep going back to us to pull money to pay for all everything. It's like, so they're gonna have these transportation packages, all these revenues. And then you were just talking about potentially them going back to the well, taking more mon, I mean.
Well, I will tell you, having been around, having been on council when the twenty seventeen bill was being discussed and Mayor Gamble was our mayor at the time, there was recognition by everybody at the table that they weren't going far enough. Like the, that they weren't ready to adopt the gas tax increase. And of course, at that point, it really was much more about gas tax, because EVs weren't as prevalent. They weren't willing to adopt the gas tax increases that it was gonna take to fund ODOT. So there was a recognition that that bill was not doing, that they would, were gonna have to come back. And I even heard that from Cliff Benz, who was the Republican, I don't know, a minority leader or whatever at the time. He's now the state, you know, the congressman from Eastern Oregon. But, um, I mean, he, he recognized that they hadn't, they weren't going far enough and that they would be back in. And I remember hearing five or six years, so they made it eight years.
I think these are, uh, forgive me Rep. Gamble if I get your numbers wrong, but what he said often is, the gas tax increase should have been fifty cents back in twenty seventeen and they increased it by ten cents. This time around, the gas tax increase would need to be eighty cents to be able to get us where we need to go. And we're proposing thirty cents. So, uh, Councilor Kosterbadi, this is your like tension that you're describing. They keep coming back because they're not willing to fully fund it at the level it needs to be funded, to not have to come back to us. Cause they don't want the re, the like retribution from the voters for increasing things too much. But that means we then constantly have to have this conversation.
They didn't mismatch their money to begin with. Maybe voters wouldn't be so hesitant to give them more of their own hard earned money, that's the problem.
Which I think is.
You keep dropping the ball and then going back to us and ask, and not you, but you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Go back to people, all the people. And I just wonder, a state like us, as big as we are as well as our population, and it's like, we're one of the highest taxed, top ten taxed states in the nation, like we still can't get shit right.
No.
Okay, okay.
Javel's out, Mayor.
I was gonna say, um, enough on transportation. Maybe we can go.
Well, I mean, I mean, are we just, uh, I, I thought I heard, uh, three, uh, three points of interest, okay? Earlier, I, I'm having to go back twenty minutes or whatever it was.
You wanna go home?
Yeah, well, no, I wanna move forward is what I wanna do. So on, on any of those issues, do we think we have a clear enough, uh, uh, path to, to submit, you know, uh, you know, a letter to, to the stakeholders on any of those issues? Cause I, I, I think that the, I've, I've heard a lot of, uh, we really don't know enough to, 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 you know, put our, plant our, uh, flag in the sand. So are any of those clear enough to move forward?
Well, I mean, I take, um, Counselor Staveng George's point that, you know, obviously the more we get out of the fifty, thirty, twenty split, the better. And if we want to take the, it should apply to everything thing, I'm fine with that. I'm not gonna, um, oppose that. I just, you know, don't know if we wanna, and, and at this point, sending a letter on that doesn't make a ton of sense. I mean, it might next week, after the bills come down or something. I mean, I don't know who we'd send a letter to right now. I don't know, what do you think on that?
I think if I had a recommendation, when are you meeting with MMC next?
Thursday.
I would go to your conversation at MMC and ask, are other people thinking about this? Is this something that we should discuss? This is something that we maybe have hesitation about, but we want to be good partners in the region. The transit funding, I think, is fine to be a letter. Like at that point, that's kind of baked, saying, we would like to see more transit funding. We're being asked to do a lot of middle housing stuff. Like I don't think people in Salem have connected the dots there between middle housing and transit. I think that's easy if we want to do a letter. I don't think the, um, cap and trade will be baked enough in general for us to have a thoughtful letter that is a policy discussion. I think this candidly would be for us to soul search yourself and then reach out to Rep. Gamble and say, listen, I don't think we should do cap and trade, or I think this money has hu- huge potentials for our state. I think it might not be perfect, but I'd encourage you to explore it. And maybe it's individual outreach. So I guess that would be my recommendation for the three.
All right, well, I will report back at council reports next Tuesday on what came of the MMC. And maybe I'll submit a written report ahead of that. But we can plan to discuss it next Tuesday. Yeah. They're not gonna be having a hearing before next Tuesday. If they're not dropping it till Friday, they're not gonna have a hearing before next Tuesday, right? Okay. All right. Any other legislative things to talk about? You got through your slides? Okay. Uh, okay. No movement on any of the, uh, bills targeted at the OGEC?
Not that I can think of.
Okay.
Maybe I'm forgetting something. I might say the only fun thing that I'll throw out is it looks like a bill that allows local governments to prevent concealed carry inside their facilities is advancing. So if we want to have that debate in Milwaukee,
Yeah.
we can do that soon.
Well, that, one of the one, you had a firearms one on your slide, but it wasn't that, it wasn't concealed carry.
It was a study that you were talking about, the cool off period.
Oh, that's right, yeah, yeah, yeah. I would love to have that passed, but, um, okay. Okay. So if that's it for legislative, then on to other council reports? Anybody got one? Counselor?
Yeah, let me just give you an update on, um, in the Watershed Council. So, you know, with the, uh, uncertainty in Washington, there were two, uh, uh, large funding sources that the Watershed Council had, uh, you know, had, had their eyes on. Both of them were, were within the Transportation Department. And, um, they were fairly large amounts of money, they were fifty million dollars each. So one of those, uh, uh, grant sources has been completely pulled off of all department websites. It's like it never existed. The other one is still active, but they have, the, the department has, uh, has never awarded any recipients or anything like that. So that, there's a lot of uncertainty really on, on both of those. The fifteen million dollar NOAA grant, you know, that, uh, you know, really got, got us, uh, you know, really in gear here, is still, is still active. We have, um, you know, the various partners have, uh, expended around eleven million dollars of that fifteen million. We're trying to, uh, pull that down as rapidly as possible to get best use of it. But you really just can't pull it out and bank it. You gotta, you know, have a, you know, be able to, you know, uh, use it expended within, you know, uh, you know, a shorter timeframe. So, uh, they're trying to move through that quickly so that they can get the bang for the buck on it. But you just can't put it in your bank and hold it. So we're looking at other things. And one of the other things is the Monsanto settlement with the state, uh, which seems to, uh, possibly fit in well with the project. It's a seven hundred million dollar settlement over, uh, you know, chemical contamination. Uh, and the governor has in fact, uh, I, I think it's good, has set up an independent board of well-respected, uh, people, uh, who are setting up the procedures to, uh, application procedures, review procedures, et cetera, uh, to dispense that. I think the advantage that the Watershed Council may have is that they, they kind of have a clear path. It's not like they're starting with a, with a clean sheet, uh, to come up with an application. So there's, you know, a lot of work that, uh, quite frankly, we could give them a, a quick win. And so, you know, we're kind of priming ourselves for that. But, you know, they, they, they're, the, the board is still, you know, getting their feet underneath them. And so we'll see how that goes. On the, uh, the parliament last week, um, and, um, not surprisingly, uh, the, a couple of the stakeholders from the Fernburg Park, um, you know, um, community came to speak to the PARB. Uh, and, um, so they kind of gave them an update about, you know, their views on things. And, uh, I told them where the, you know, the, the city council, you know, was at that moment in that, you know, the, you know, the various, uh, parties need to come up with, um, you know, you know, sort of a consolidated position or compromise and everything like that. And then we consider if we wanted to do anything else, but it's not really a city project at this point. It hasn't been from the start. We have a, uh, number of new members coming in, uh, to the PARB. And, um, Ali, the chair, is leaving, uh, the PARB. And so we're looking for a new chairman. Unfortunately, none of the existing members feel like they're ready to take on that role. So, um, uh, I'm sure it'll shake out, uh, and maybe one of the new members will want to do it. I sort of offered that, uh, you know, I could, uh, use, uh, you know, my education and training money to get them some, uh, you know, some Jurassic Parliament or, uh, League of, uh, Oregon City, uh, training on running, uh, you know, uh, a city committee, uh, that kind of thing. If that would alleviate any of their concerns on them. And I'm sure that we could, uh, you know, get them more comfortable with that role. And, uh, so we'll see how that goes, but that's, you know, kind of a month or two away.
We're also gonna need them to appoint a, someone to represent them on the district advisory committee. And it does not have to be the chair. It can be the chair. It kind of has been the chair in the last few years, but it does not have to be the same person.
I, I think it's sort of the, the ideal situation that that, that the chair is the rep to the DAC. But again, it's not necessary, we could work around it. But, you know, it's kind of like that person could be a focal point for that information. And, um, so Ali, uh, gave some feedback on the DAC, uh, meeting on the NCPRD budget and the cuts to the Milwaukee Center. And I updated that because, um, it was, um, you know, I had the latest information from the county board meeting and that kind of thing. So that's where we are on PARB. And I will ask, is the rest of the council up to date on what the county decided on the cuts? You, the mayor, Rebecca? So yeah, let me, let me go over it, I wasn't sure. So there were quite a few cuts proposed to the NCPRD budget with a large impact on the Milwaukee Community Center. And, um, so, um, it was, um, you know, there was some staff cuts, some, uh, uh, service program cuts. One of the cuts was to eliminate all of the transportation services. And one was to close the, uh, the center on, completely on Friday. And, um, so I'm, I'm sure I missed some, but those were kind of the big highlights. And so when the county board, you know, the, the, the district directors met at their budget meeting, they had a big turnout of people. And I think they had about twelve, fifteen people testified against that, those. And, uh, so, um, it, I think the, the, the board took it seriously. And, uh, they directed the, uh, the district to restore funding for a period of six months to keep the transportation going and to keep the, the center open on Fridays. They felt like that those were the largest, the, the most impactful cuts that they were looking at. And, uh, basically, uh, gave them the, sort of the marching orders to, to try to find out, find, uh, other solutions with other partnerships or, uh, sources of funding and that kind of thing. And so we, those six month, um, are, are really a bridge to keep those, those services functioning until they can, they, they hope that they can come up with a, a longer term solution.
Are those services general fund? Or are they federal fund?
They're, they're really, um, you know, NCPRD funds.
Well, so they do get some federal funding for that, but they, they have always supplemented from their general fund. So they spend, I don't know what the dollar figure is, but they characterize their subsidy out of their general fund to, um, older adult services as twenty eight percent, sports leagues as twenty eight percent, recreation program as twenty eight percent, and aquatic center as whatever the balance is, sixteen percent or whatever.
So are they choosing to, um, cut future services and forego the federal supplement? Or are they proposing that that money be used elsewhere?
I, I don't think they're trying to forego any federal money. I think they're just, um, they're not wanting to backfill the balance out of their general fund. I do think, I mean, they're, I'm going to go to a meeting with some of them next week. I do think there is some idea, you hear Commissioner Savis say, cities run senior centers. Yeah. Well, and I mean, and he points to Oregon City and Gladstone, which do run senior centers, but they aren't serving a population of eighty percent of unincorporated around them. So I do worry that there's some effort here to try and say, it's our job to provide the senior center. But, I mean, we'll see. I also guess I didn't complete, I'm not completely sure. I thought they were restoring the Fridays. I, I thought they were restoring the transportation.
They restored the Friday.
Fridays, okay, okay. I mean, they haven't, Savis said at the last DAC meeting that he knew since last summer, when Cindy Becker was the interim director before they appointed Kia, that the funding, the way older adult services were, has been, been run was unsustainable. I didn't clue into that until November, when Kia really said that kind of specifically. But, um, but he says he's known it since last September. Yet the county commission has not convened any task force to try and forge a solution here. And it's kind of crazy to me that that hasn't happened. But, um, I think, you know, we'll see what comes of this meeting next week. I think it's just between a couple of potential donors that I think they think could fill a hole and me representing the city, because they are looking at us to help fill the hole. But I think there needs to be a much bigger conversation with Health and Human Services and other players at the table.
I was gonna say, like, why, why don't they have, do they, H3S not have the budget to? That's supposed to be their thing, uh, NCPRD do.
Well, that was the point of the letter that Robert wrote for us, yes? Yes, um.
Did they say anything about the H3S budget or, I, I can find that too.
I mean, they kind of implied in their budget hearing that they have gotten all they, they can get from H3S. I, I mean.
I could have sworn 2D Smith had a commercial that said they had a hundred and fifty three million dollar rainy day fund. fund. I'd be tempted to tap into that.
Yeah. Anyway, I do think there will be more to come in the days ahead. But, uh, there's, yeah, it's a six-month stopgap. Uh, and, uh, and there needs to be a better solution for the senior services. I mean, the, the one thing that did come out of the, uh, some of the letter-writing campaign was that someone found the old voter's pamphlet from 1991. And the page out of the voter's pamphlet makes very clear that they were signing on to provide senior services. They recognized at the time that senior services were not being provided to the unincorporated area. And that was part of their whole motivation for having Milwaukee be part of NCPRD. It was pretty clear.
Um, Mayor, the other examples that Commissioner Savis is pointing to in Oregon City and Gladstone, do any of those serve unincorporated urban pockets?
Well, I, I don't know the answer to that. I mean, I'm, I would imagine they serve some amount of that, but not like, uh, an urban pocket that is bigger than the city itself. Yeah.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
Yeah. Um, okay. Next, anyone else with council reports?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Um, we had our, our, we had the, uh, chamber meeting today. That one was pretty, uh, there wasn't a lot, a lot discussed. There was mostly a, a, a presentation on the Sunrise Corridor, which is just an insane amount of money and a huge project. It's ambitious. It's really cool. Um, there are some doubts that the project will get done within the chamber. Um, and then after that, they just, they went over some of their, the legislative, uh, bills that they were watching, um, and what they thought about some of those. And, and, I mean, I, I can get into the specific bills, but I, you know, I won't do that right now. Spare you guys that. Um, and that was pretty much our, our chamber meeting, uh, in a nutshell. Then I had, yesterday, last night, I actually had a meeting with the, uh, CAP, Community Action Board. Um, and some of the things we talked about in that meeting, we updated our, our bylaws finally, which was, which took a little bit. Uh, we do actually allow alternates now. Um, so any members can, can have an alternate, alternate. However, those members with alternates cannot serve as, as a, uh, executive committee members. We are still working on the stipend for, uh, members of the CAP. Uh, right now, we, we were discussing a $25 stipend, but there is potential for increasing that stipend higher, uh, due to inflation, because we've been talking about it for like a year. Um, we did go over some statistical numbers for the past fiscal years in terms of, uh, rental assistance, utility assistance numbers, um, eviction assistance, uh, landlord tenant resources and things like that. And, and as I mentioned in our work session, um, and we're trying, right now, we're, we're working on gathering data to find out how, how to better serve those individuals to get those numbers down, because there was about over 10,000 individuals just in the last fiscal year who required, um, uh, utility assistance. And that's a huge massive number of people. Um, and then there was another, what, 3,300 who needed rental assistance, and 2,600 out of those 3,300 were facing eviction. So, um, we're trying to figure out, uh, what are some of the systemic issues that maybe we could, we could advocate for, um, in order to prevent those from happening? And, uh, yeah, um, uh, our recruitment is open as well. We are, we do have opening for, I think, another, another member of the, uh, of the income-constrained community. Um, whether you're income constrained now or if you have lived experience, uh, there is a spot available now to serve. And, yeah, that is it.
That's good.
Counselor, did you have any?
Nope.
Okay.
I will take five seconds. I went to a great neighborhood meeting about Fernburg Park in Lynwood. Um, I'd say kudos to Greg and the whole Lynwood NDA team for facilitating that meeting. It's hard when people are upset at you and have big feelings, and I think Greg did a really good job. Um, and I think that you should do some kudos to the folks who surround the park who came and talked. Um, I'm glad to see them getting involved with their NDA. The resolution is they're gonna be looking, having a conversation about, um, returning back to selecting a project and seeing if this is the project that the neighborhood wants to select. So there, I think, is an ongoing conversation. We'll see where it goes from there. But happy to chat one-on-one if anyone wants to talk about this, too.
I guess what I'd heard was that they were, the Neighborhood Association was gonna vote in September?
Yep. Once they get back from summer recess.
Okay. Well, for whether they want to go forward or not, or whether they're, the, the dissenters have changed their view of the NDA. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. I do have a few this time. Sorry, guys. Um, first off, since we talked about C4 and, um, uh, since it came up in transportation, um, there was an email about the C4 retreat. I just want to make sure everybody got it. I think it looks kind of interesting. They're doing housing first this time, uh, the first day, and then transportation the second day. Um, and, um, also, uh, Will has a, or the council president has a C4 meeting Thursday night, um, right now. The, um, staff recommendation for the Step Two RFA funding is, would have our railroad project getting funded. It would fund that project. I mean, it would put them forward to Metro to fund that project, an Oregon City project and a Gladstone project. Um, there's some worry that, um, happy, there's gonna be some effort to push back and try and do more that's related to the Sunrise, uh, and that's, and the $12 million request from Happy Valley. But, I don't know, I guess I'm cautiously optimistic that the staff, uh, staff recommendation is gonna make it through C4 this Thursday. We'll see. Um, uh, so I wanted to give a report. Oh, I'll give you the short ones first. MMC, the, um, Metro Mayor's Consortium had its, in, they do, we do in-person meetings about quarterly, and then we do Zoom meetings the other months. Um, last, a couple weeks ago, we had, uh, Congressman Blumenauer and, uh, the woman who runs the PSU Institute for Metropolitan Studies, which is his new gig at PSU. Um, they are casting around for how they can serve the cities in the metro area. Uh, maybe not just cities in the metro area, but how they can serve cities as a convener for dialogues that need to happen. And so they've done some surveying, and they, uh, they talked to us about that and sort of put in a pitch of, for themselves as, uh, as a resource. Um, a very interesting thing happened at the end. There was some talk about veterans, and there was a poll of the, uh, mayors in the room. How many are veterans? And seven mayors are veterans, which was more than half of the room. So I thought that was, that was interesting. Um, they did make fun of one mayor for, because he's, he was a veteran of the Coast Guard, and there was a debate about whether that was really qualified as a veteran. But anyway, uh, um, and, and then after the MMC meeting, there is a meeting called the GPI, Greater Portland, Inc., which is the, this group that helps, uh, that cities belong to and pay dues to. Milwaukee does not, um, but, uh, a lot of cities do, uh, that is recruiting businesses to the area. And, um, uh, you know, both from other parts of the US, from international businesses, everything. And it was, uh, and so they have what they call the GPI Small Cities Consortium, and that group meets after the MMC meeting. And so I stuck around for it, even though I kind of was an interloper, but they let me stick around and hear it. Um, and they, they had a slideshow, which I will send around to everyone, that had, um, sort of, you know, the latest on tariffs and stuff, um, uh, and the instability, uh, just a couple of takeaways from that. The effective tax rate on Oregon imports from tariffs so far is estimated at 26%. Um, tourism in Oregon had been going up since, um, since the COVID, and had gone up pretty significantly in 2023. But there is certainly concern that it's gonna stall now. I've heard that in other quarters, that like Canadian, especially Canadian tourism is expected to be down. And I've heard, uh, a, a mayor on the coast has heard some projection that 20% tourism, uh, 20% fewer tourists in Oregon expected this summer. So that will be harmful to, uh, a lot of coastal cities and other areas. Um, it was very interesting about the tariff instability, that they had examples of, um, they kept, they, they told some stories about some businesses that are coming here, and, and a lot of them were kind of green businesses. One was some business that's making, um, you know, disposable cutlery out of something that's not, um, plastic. Not sure what it is. Um, one of them was something having to do with EV battery technology or EV charger technology. Um, but they're all coming here for the R&amp;D. They're all coming here to be associated or co-located near, uh, a university or some sort of R&amp;D facility. There was no talk about manufacturing, and, and somebody asked, like, are you seeing any uptick in manufacturing? Because that's the whole theory behind this, uh, you know, behind these tariffs. And, um, is that we're gonna onshore bring back manufacturing. And in fact, they had a couple of stories that are just the opposite, of foreign firms that last fall, last summer or fall, were looking at bringing manufacturing facilities to Oregon, who have now put manufacturing on hold because of all the instability out of the tariffs. So I thought that was a pretty interesting bit of info. Um, and then, um, the SHS. So for four months now, I've been going to SHS, uh, that what they call the President's Work Group meetings on the SHS ballot measure. I sent you guys the, um, document last night. That is the, um, I have it here. But anyway, it's the sort of vision and framework document. It's, um, it's a little bit crazy to me that it took us four months to get to this. But, um, there, I do think the, what the group has achieved by having cities, counties, and some providers in the room is at least some conversation and, um, some connection and some discussion of what they call KPIs, Key Performance Indicators. So what metrics should we be using? So that document that I sent you has their sort of five programmatic goals, 10, uh, process or deliverable goals, and then KPIs under each of them. Um, there was a lot of feedback from the room that the document is sort of too long, and that there could be, a lot of those goals could be rolled together. And there was a, a commentary from, uh, Multnomah County Commissioner Singleton, who comes from a service provider background, that, um, the KPI, that we needed to give the KPIs a hard look, um, for, are they data that we have or can reasonably get, and that we're not, you know, sort of creating unwieldy or unattainable expectations with what data we ask to be captured and measured. Um, I mean, I think that document is, it's gonna come out. There's only one more meeting left of this group, um, in two weeks. I think that document's gonna come out, and it'll be fine as a document. It doesn't answer a lot of the questions that I think many of us mayors went into about where are the gaps to the system, you know, where, where is it working and where is it not working? Um, it's not at all clear to me. In fact, Clackamas County, both commissioners were absent yesterday. Uh, the Washington County Chair was also absent yesterday. It's not at all clear to me that the counties and Metro and, you know, that everybody's gonna be in alignment. But it does look like, um, this, the intention is still to go out on this fall's ballot. Um, they are, Metro is in the process right now, uh, has some, um, polling going on right now, and I think they're supposed to have the results next week. Um, and that may inform that decision. But, um, uh, it's, it's an interesting, I mean, everybody recognizes that we need to, uh, that this, this is gonna lapse. It's not gonna lapse until 2031. I have never understood quite what the, uh, what the feeling was of why it needed to go this year. But, um, uh, I think this whole process got started because the house, the Affordable Housing Ballot Measure money has all been allocated, and there was some feeling that there was extra money in the SHS that could be reallocated to building housing. I'm not sure that they're any closer now to consensus on that question and on, I think the counties still think that that money needs to be spent on SH, on supportive housing services and on the kind of things they've been spending it on, uh, and not reduced. So I really don't know where this thing is going, but it's been a very interesting look at, uh, players on the regional stage, I guess I would say. Um, and watch for news maybe in the next few weeks about where they ultimately decide to go. Um, let me see. Yeah. Yeah. Um, okay. Uh, I feel like there was something else, but I didn't write it on my list, so I guess I can wait. Um, anything else?
Not a, not a, um, a, a staff report, but just sort of a general, uh, uh, announcement is that the, um, the utility, the PGE utility pole chargers, uh, throughout the city, uh, PGE was using a, a shell recharge, um, you know, as, uh, you know, the, the final delivery, uh, product and, and billing for the PGE utility pole, uh, projects. That has changed. And so, um, those who had shell accounts got, you know, notifications of this, and if they had any balances, gonna be returned to their form of payment and everything like that. And so, uh, there's basically a, a new company, and of course, a new app that you have to download, uh, and it's called, uh, Op Connect, uh, Op Connect. And, uh, but the problem is, is that they had to, they have to replace the chargers. I mean, I was, I looked out my front window, and I saw the third charger going up on that pole in two years, uh, because it was being replaced by Op Connects, I suppose. Uh, but, uh, I, I went to the PGE website, and they said that, that, that these things may be down for like a month. So I don't know the exact status, but they're being, it's, you know, there's some churn there. So, yeah.
Thanks for letting us know that. Um, all right. If nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, we have an MRC meeting still. Oh, my God. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the council meeting.
I move to adjourn.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the city council regular session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. All right. After the meeting, I, I'm not gonna read that, because we're just gonna go into it, right? Um, so, "I call the redevelopment commission meeting to order. This meeting is being conducted in person at City Hall and by video conference. The public may participate in this meeting by coming to City Hall, joining the Zoom webinar, or watching on the city's YouTube channel." Do I need to read the rest of the script? Do we have anybody sitting and waiting?
We do have a Zoom audience.
Other than Mr. Brilio?
Uh, Mr. Brilio is not in the Zoom audience.
Oh, okay. So I do, okay. Well, so I'll read it. Okay. "There will be opportunities for the public to speak during this hearing. If you would like to address the commission, you may come to City Hall. If you are interested in speaking, please let staff know by emailing ocr@milwaukeeoregon.gov for those on Zoom, or submitting a low comment card for those at City Hall. When it's time to take comments, staff will monitor the comment cards, email inbox, and Zoom participant list in chat. We will take comments in the order they are received and seen. Written comments may be emailed to ocr@milwaukeeoregon.gov." I'm gonna forego this translation services part of the script. Um, uh, so the first item of business is approval of the minutes of the March 4th, 2025 commission. Are there any discussion or edits to those minutes?
I was just gonna interject really quickly, Mayor, because we do have a Zoom audience. I don't see a comment period, Scott, on the script. So would that typically have come now before the approval of the minutes?
Um, it probably would have, should have been, maybe, if, if the chair wanted to take comment during a discussion.
comment during a discussion item, but that's a good point. And we'll correct the script for the MRC in the future. It's a may take comments, not a guaranteed time. Chair discretion, like always, uh, if during that item, somebody indicates they want to speak.
Okay. Okay. So going on to the minutes, any comments on the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the March 4th, 2025 Redevelopment Commission meeting minutes.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the March 4th, 2025 Redevelopment Commission meeting minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. None heard. Meeting minutes are approved unanimously. And Michael's gone, and so, uh, the budget review, Ms. Savor.
It's me, me all night. I sent, I sent Michael home and I finally sent Sierra home because she was biking and I didn't want her to bike in the dark. And I think tonight's update is going to be pretty short. Um, I'm going to actually kind of blend together this and the additional reports, um, because it's kind of all budget and all status update on the URA. But just wanted to, to highlight a few things that were in your staff report packet. Good news, we have exceeded revenue projections that were in the budget for this fiscal year. Uh, we expected to collect about $790,000, um, in, in, through April 30th of 2025 through the last quarter, and we've exceeded a million. So that's great. We've also accrued some good interest income. Um, and so we're about 35% over budgeted revenues, um, just for these first three quarters. So the MRC fund continues to be healthy, which is great. We are also spending MRC money, which is also great. We have issued 19 business improvement grants and we have five in the queue. If you have specific questions about what those are, I'll have to relay those to Sierra and Joseph, um, but we are, I know, really gearing up on a lot of like the storytelling around that, trying to capture some good photos and videos of the great work that's happening. But that's just, that's a transformative amount of storefront and tenant improvements in our, on our main streets. We have been so successful. We budgeted $600,000 for the Business Improvement Grant Program and we are almost expended of that. So next quarter, your next quarterly budget adjustment, I want you to, or Joseph and I want you to be prepared that we will likely come asking for additional appropriation for those grants, just because that has been so successful and because we're exceeding revenue projections in the fund. That will allow us to not lose momentum. More and more people are hearing about the grant program and it just would be great to continue to support this kind of revitalization work downtown. So very exciting. The Mercac met, uh, last week. Sorry, Mayor.
Can I ask, um, the funds can be, the grants are for anywhere in the MRC, in the urban renewal area, so they could be used by new businesses in Milwaukee marketplace.
Okay, they could.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yes, great point. Um, so the Mercac met last week, um, and a couple updates to share out of that. One, you know, we have been doing a look back from the grant program back to January of 2023, which has been great. It's helped us capture a lot of folks who maybe, uh, didn't know about the program and then found out and were like, oh no, I had to this thing. And so I think it's been a really wonderful, you know, offer. And I think at some point, the going back almost two years loses a little bit of its meaning. So the Mercac, um, uh, kind of gave direction and Joseph, as the executive director, agreed that they're going to consider a 90-day look back now. So it won't go back to a specific date. It will always be, if someone's applying and says, hey, in the last 90 days I've done this work, um, could you consider it? Now, the grants continue to be under the discretion of, um, of, you know, the executive director and subject to, to conversations, but, um, I think that will still maintain that spirit of we're not trying to penalize people. We want to, we want to have some kind of grace, but not going back two years. Uh, let's see, the second thing that the Mercac agreed to do, um, we have had, uh, very little, potentially no uptake of the anti-displacement grant part of the program. And part of that, Mercac thinks might be a branding issue, that there may be some stigma associated with something named that, maybe just kind of, oh, I don't, I don't know if I want to, um, I don't know, just, just maybe not inclined to apply for it. So they are, we're still working on the title, but thinking of something kind of legacy business consulting support or something that really talks about established businesses who want some consulting to help remain in business and, and adapt to sort of the modern market. So, uh, that would, that'll be great. And, um, more to come from the executive director on the, um, branding of that. I think those were the big things Joseph wanted me to hit on. Sierra is wonderful. If you have not had a chance to meet with her, she's fantastic, um, and has been such a wonderful addition to our, our team and is such a data whiz. I mean, I think that's, we, we have, we have so much charisma already, I think, in, in our staff that we could have hired someone who was just another kind of charismatic business figure. And Joseph, I think, found someone who has a lot of charisma in, in Sierra, but is also just a really great, smart, uh, business whiz and is going to help us really get more sophisticated about, um, the analytics behind how we do economic development work. So I think that's it. Oh, the last thing, capital outlay. Um, there was a point in the staff report about, we had a pretty healthy capital budget in the MRC, was about 4.7 million. We are just like, for transparency, not going to spend that because the Main Street project, which will still happen next summer, we won't be invoicing for until after the fiscal year turns over. So just know that that capital budget might, um, go, will go down and likely that can also help with the increase that we will be asking for in the business grants. That's me. I meant to bring my Joseph, um, face thing that's like, I'm Joseph, and I forgot it, but that's the end of me moonlighting as Joseph.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Savor? I'm not seeing any. Any further MRC reports, which I guess would be Counselor Stephen Jordan?
Nope. That summed it up beautifully.
Okay. Uh, well, then with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn the commission meeting.
I second.
Uh, it has been moved and seconded to adjourn the Milwaukee Redevelopment Commission meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. None heard. The meeting is adjourned.